Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Hey Kathy, I invited Chelsea Ruder to be on the call when our stuff comes up, just in case there's some additional questions. So if you get kind of a stray one, that might be her.
Okay, thank you Debbie.
And I'm concerned about Roger. I hope he didn't jump.
We let anybody in here Debbie?
Obviously.
You can let me know when you're ready to go Kathy.
I'm looking for Commissioner Schwartz.
She is in her office.
I just let her in.
Oh, there she is.
Nice job Tyler.
Okay, I think we're all here.
Right?
Recording in progress.
And we're recording. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and start. Welcome to Wednesday, September 1st. I believe it's September. We started harvest this morning with the great, so an early morning for me. So welcome everyone to the Wasco County Board Commissioner meeting. We have a couple things I wanted to go over before we get to our COVID update. So hopefully Dr. McDonald, you'll have a little patience with us. We did have some sad news this month. John Carter passed away. So John, if you don't know John, he was one of our big orchardists in Wasco County. It was described in his obituary that he was a fierce proponent of the industry of cherries. It was, he's, 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 if you didn't know him, he's a great guy. He was also on our budget committee for many years. And he was a great volunteer and did all sorts of great things for our community. So it's a big loss for us. Our condolences go out to his family, but he was a great kind of example for all of us to kind of follow as we go forward. Additionally, we had one of our employees be recognized by the Secretary of State and we have a little video that I think Kathy is gonna play. Chrissy Zog is in our clerk's office. So we congratulate her and we'll go ahead and watch this for a couple minutes.
This one is near and dear to my heart. I am so honored to present a Nass Medallion Award to Christie Zog, the Chief Deputy Wasco County Clerk, my home county. As Girl Scout leader in the Dawls and as Wasco County's Chief Deputy Clerk for your creativity and resourcefulness in the pursuit of transparency in our elections process. Christie Zog and her two daughters Ella and Arlen transformed their Girl Scout Elections and Civics event into a fabulous video called "Path of the Ballot." The video, which was shot, produced, and voiced entirely by them, provided much-wanted transparency on the elections process and received accolades from local political parties and citizens and clerks across the state. Chrissy, Ella, Arlen, your Girl Scout troop, and my hometown of the Dawls, congratulations as your Secretary of State, as your hometown girl, and on behalf of the National Association Secretaries of State, congratulations and thank you for your incredible video. We love sharing it.
Alright, so congratulations to our own Chrissy Zog. That's awesome. If you haven't had an opportunity to go take a look at the video, I think it's posted on our clerk's office under elections. And we're just so happy that she was recognized. Her and her kids were recognized for the great work that they're doing for the clerk's office. So congratulations and bravo. And then finally, this is, leads into our discussion with North Central Public Health District. And we have been, of course, thanking Shelley and Mimi, you know, every time they come to our meetings and trying to, you know, it's, it's hard to really express the appreciation that us Wasco County has for the North Central Public Health District and all the staff. I mean, every single person up there works hard and, and has just been tremendous through this challenge. And as you know, like we went into COVID last March and you know, who knows how long it was gonna last, but probably just a few months. And you know, they were gonna be working real hard. It wasn't gonna be great. Well, here it is, you know, 18, 19 months later, still grinding away through, you know, difficult times, challenging times. You know, it's, I, I don't think that they're always treated with the respect that they deserve. There's a lot of people that, you know, it's kind of a frustrating time in our society today. You know, people feel, you know, pressured to do things. And you know, the health district staff, they're just trying to do, they're trying to help us. They're just trying to help us be healthy. They're trying to help us through this crisis. And I just wanted, we just wanted to pay us kind of a special tribute to all of the employees of North Central Public Health. And we have a certificate for each one of you. We're gonna figure out how we're gonna get them up there to you because we don't want to create problems. But the certificate reads, and again, it's, you know, I kind of feel bad that it's, it's just a certificate. But we do want to sincerely let you know that we appreciate every one of the staff up there. So what it says, in this case, this is one to the, to the overall district. The certificate is awarded to North Central Public Health with sincere gratitude for incredible work in keeping our community healthy and safe throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. And obviously, we're not done yet. They're not done yet. So there's still much to do. But we did want all of your staff to know how much we appreciate you, how much we, we know how much work that you're doing. And we know you're not appreciated all the time and you should be, and we certainly want to do it. So for myself and from the commissioners, thank you to each one of your staff. And we do have certificates. And I'm gonna coordinate with Shelley of how we're gonna get those up there. And I don't know if the other commissioners wanted to say anything to kind of tag on to my comments.
Go ahead Steve.
Yeah, okay, thank you. There's not much else I think can be said. Scott, I think you said it well, but it is, it is deeply appreciated, the hard work that everybody is doing. And thank you all. Mr. Schwartz?
Oh yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you Scott. You said it well. And I really don't have any more to add. Just a heartfelt thank you to the entire staff. And yeah, we gotta keep going. Thanks.
Unfortunately, you do need to keep going. And Mimi's gonna talk to us about where we're at today. And you know, one would hope that we would be in a better spot. And I don't think we're in a great spot. So anyway, again, sincere appreciation to you. Thank you. And on to Dr. McDonald.
All right. Well, thank you so much Commissioner Haye and our other commissioners. On behalf of North Central Public Health District staff, we truly recognize how much support that we've gotten from our Wasco County Commissioners and the Wasco County staff. And we truly would not be able to do what we do without all of your assistance. So I feel like we are incredibly fortunate in the support that we have from our elected officials and from all the staff who are working through Wasco County. So thanks for that. Alright, so for those of you who don't know me, I'm Dr. Mimi McDonald. I'm the Health Officer for North Central Public Health District. And I'll give our update today on the status of COVID-19 pandemic, starting off as I usually do with our total numbers. So this is from the very beginning of the pandemic. Wasco County had over 2,000 total cases with 37 deaths. Sadly, we've had several deaths in the past month related to outbreaks. Sherman County is at 106 cases with 2 deaths. Gillum County, 124 cases with 3 deaths. Next slide. Alright, so back to our journey of graphs. So this graph shows cases per week in Wasco County only. So these are cases from the left-hand side, starts back in November. And here we are, if you look on the far right, that was our very last week of, starting the Sunday of August 22nd. So you can see that our, have a higher weekly total than at any other time during the pandemic. Next slide. This is slightly similar, but this is by month. So you can see our previous high peak in terms of total cases for Wasco County had been in the month of December, 300 something cases. And obviously, in the month of August of 2021, we had over 500 cases, 520 something. And it also happens to be for Gillum and Sherman County, their highest months, sorry, highest number of cases per month occurred in the month of August of 2021. So clearly, we are, as Commissioner Haye said, we're not done yet. Next slide. Alright, for this one, this is kind of breaking it down. As I mentioned, we had this very high case count in the week of August 22nd. So in Wasco County, 160 cases. So then when we look at cases per 100,000, that's sort of a per capita way to look at it. So of course, the higher the number, that means that the more concentration or the more percentage of cases is mostly that there are. So at 586 per 100,000, that's far more than we want. The test percent positivity, remember, that's the number we like more lower than 5% to indicate that we're collecting all of the positive cases. So we've been hovering in this area about 9, 9 and 1/2% in Wasco County. So again, there's, which concerns us, meaning there's probably some cases out there that we're not aware of and that people aren't aware that they have it. Sherman County, they also had a fair number of cases the past week with 9, 501 per 100,000 with a 9.7% positivity. Gillum County at 8 with 402 per 100,000, 16.7. And then, I don't know, sorry, I don't know if you guys can see it on yours. Oops, sorry, I'm trying to get my number. In Oregon, the Oregon average cases per 100,000 for the past week. Oh, I wonder if I, sorry, because now I'm worried that I didn't change it. We're just gonna ignore that Oregon average because I'm not sure if I changed it from, got the data from the appropriate week. So we're gonna skip that one. We'll go on to the next slide. Want to make sure I'm providing the right amount, right information. Alright, this one is correct and up to date as of August 31st. This is Oregon cases. And you can see our Epi curve, again, more cases in Oregon than had occurred at any time during the pandemic. Next slide please. And this is what worries us the most. Oregon hospitalized cases. So the, the dark blue line, just so you know, that's like total cases. But the thing that is concerning, kind of the middle line, that is the positive, oh, I'm sorry, the dark blue line, total hospitalized cases, middle blue is positive patients in intensive care unit beds. And then the light line is patients on ventilators. So again, more, it's not just the number of cases, which have increased dramatically, but number of people in hospitals in Oregon, number of people in ICUs and on ventilators. And so I suspect that as, as this is happening and happening with more individuals from our regions as well, like people will start to, to know someone maybe who has had to go to the hospital for COVID or maybe even has been transferred to another hospital for ventilatory support. And it's, it's very concerning. Next slide please. So to kind of point that out, so the region that Wasco County in is in, is Region 6 in Oregon. So this, this graph includes data from Hood River, Wasco, Sherman, and Gillum Counties. So essentially, the Providence Hood River Memorial Hospital and Mid-Columbia Medical Center. So what this is, and I'm sorry, because I know these numbers are kind of small, is number of COVID-positive patients who are in a hospital bed. So previously during the pandemic, the highest number of patients in a hospital bed in our region had been 6. That was last winter. And now you can see that, that number is up to 14 people who are occupying hospital beds at our 2 hospitals who have COVID-19. So I think that for those who don't know, you know, what's the total number of hospital beds? It varies different days, somewhere 60, 70 available beds. So you have to understand that these patients, of course, they need to be hospitalized, but they are also taking the space. And it may come to the point where there are not the resources available potentially to take care of other urgent emergent or needs. And so this again, very, very concerning. Next slide please. So that was about our hospitalizations. Talk a little bit about our vaccination status, which continues to go up. Luckily, this can only go up. So that's the nice thing about it. In Oregon, total 72.3% of folks 18 and up are vaccinated. Wasco County, we're pretty close to the state average, but not as close as we could be, 65.1%. Our neighbors to the west of Hood River, 77.9% of those 18 and up are vaccinated. Sherman to the east at 59% and Gillum at 45%. So one of the reasons why, actually, do you mind going back to that slide just for a second Kathy? One of the reasons why I think that this is important, why am I sort of harping on percentages of vaccines? You know, we kind of know what's going on. People who are unvaccinated are 29 times more likely to be hospitalized with COVID than people who are vaccinated. So 29 times more likely to take up a hospital bed if they do contract COVID if they are not vaccinated. And we truly, truly do not want our residents to suffer or their loved ones to suffer, to be hospitalized. So, so important to get vaccinated. Alright, next slide please. Thank you. Alright, so again, and I'll just touch on this briefly. I, I put a where in here. So where are these cases coming from? We've certainly had some outbreaks in our long-term care facilities and other congregate settings. So you can think of outbreaks in daycares, outbreaks in correctional facilities. There are workplace outbreaks, lots of social gatherings. Everyone who, you know, put off that wedding and whatnot for a year, people are getting together. We know this. And then there are just spontaneous cases. Many times when we investigate and we contact people to see if they have a sense of where they contracted COVID. And the answer is no, they're not sure where they got it from. So that's the where they're happening, which unfortunately is kind of everywhere. Why is it happening? Again, that Delta variant is so much more contagious than the prior variants in the original strain of COVID-19. Much, much, much more transmissible. I think chicken pox and measles, those of us who are old enough to have ever had those and how contagious they are. So there's that half of it. And then the other part is, it is true that vaccinated individuals can contract COVID. It's much less likely than vaccinated people, but they can. They're much more likely to have a mild case, but they can also transmit it as well. Now that timeframe of people are vaccinated, the number of days that they might potentially transmit it is much smaller. If they contract COVID, then unvaccinated people who contract COVID. But again, it's still there. So I want people to be aware that, you know, just being vaccinated unfortunately doesn't give people carte blanche and doesn't make us invincible from COVID-19, either getting it ourselves or giving it to others. So that's why it's important that all of us continue to abide by the recommendations and regulations, public health safety recommendations that are in place. Alright, next slide. Okay, so I'm gonna talk about some hot topics. There's a lot of stuff going on. And this is not necessarily in any particular order, just the order that I thought of them when I was making these slides this morning. So when will that vaccine be available for those under 12? It is sounding more like late fall or early winter. This is per the Pfizer head pharmacist. And so they said that was sort of an optimistic timeline. I think the Pfizer data will be completely collected by the end of this month and then will be able to be reviewed. Alright, so that's for COVID-19 vaccines available for those under 12. Next, let's talk about getting a third dose of Pfizer or Moderna versus getting a booster. So I'm gonna talk about that third dose first. So for people who are immunocompromised, either that they are taking a medication that is lowering their immune system or potentially that they have a lowered immune system just from an illness. Now, for those people, what is recommended is a third dose, in other words, to complete that series because their bodies weren't able to mount that immune response, a third dose is recommended and is available now. And you can get it anywhere that you would normally get a COVID-19 vaccine. You can get it at the health department. You can get it at your primary care provider. You can get it at a pharmacy. You don't need a letter from anyone. It is very good to talk to your primary care provider or your specialist about it, but really want to let people know this is available. This is not the booster, but this is to complete the series for people who are immunocompromised for a couple of different reasons. And we're really recommending this. Okay, so that's, that's, nope, we're not quite good yet. Sorry. So that's for our, that's the vaccine number 3. Now, the booster, so a booster shot, I know, it's a little semantic. So in other words, it's a little bit of a wordplay. But what we're calling the booster shot is sort of for more of the general population. And that's the one that will be available 8 months after a person's, has completed their original series of vaccines. So just as kind of the vaccines were rolled out for certain groups, so too, we believe the booster shots are gonna be rolled out. The recommendation for this is currently being evaluated by the ACIP. You probably remember our federal administration recommended that this be available by September 20th. Final recommendations haven't come out, but we are in our Central Public Health District and other places as well, preparing to ramp up our ability to vaccinate those who want to get this booster vaccine. Because as we, we have observed, and of course, this is what science is, you know, you keep taking in new information that it appears that after about 8 months, some of the immunity wears off, as I mentioned. You know, people can contract it even if you're vaccinated. So having that booster shot will help people who have been vaccinated to, again, potentially be much less likely to become infected with COVID-19 and therefore much less likely to transmit it. So vaccine number 3 available now for anyone who's immunocompromised. Please talk to your healthcare provider. Booster not available yet. We will keep you all posted and we're gearing up for it. Okay, next slide. That was a lot. More hot topics. As I think everyone knows, it's not such a hot topic. Pfizer received a full FDA approval. So it is no longer under the Emergency Youth Authorization for the Pfizer vaccine. Indoor mask mandate, I don't think that's necessarily a hot topic. We've been living with that. Outdoor mask mandate, here's how I personally think of it. If you are outside and you are in a group setting or in a public place and someone is, is within your space and you don't know them, you should be wearing a mask. I don't want some breathing in my space. So if I'm in a place where I have to really, even if it's outside, if I have to stand in line and someone's right up in my face, yeah, I would like them to have a mask and I'm gonna put mine on as well. You won't see me in town wearing my mask. I don't, you don't need to do it then. But there are going to be instances when it's really important. If you're, again, like packed in line at a sporting event or something like that. Alright. Other things that came up, certainly since we've had our last talk, COVID-19 vaccination mandates. This has changed a little bit for healthcare workers and K-12 staff. So there will be, I think it's October 15th is the date by which people are to be fully vaccinated. It is possible for people to have medical exception, excuse me, exemptions and some religious exemptions. But otherwise, to keep these workplaces safe, to keep our children safe, and to keep everyone in the healthcare system and the people we provide care for safe. In Oregon, these are mandated. Next slide, already. Monoclonal antibody therapy. So what is this? This is something that has been available for several months. Several months. And so it is a way to prevent the progression of COVID-19 in high-risk individuals. So who is this for? This is for people who've gotten COVID. They have mild to moderate symptoms and they have a medical condition or a number of medical conditions which would put them at high risk for hospitalizations. The reasons this has been brought up, currently, it has changed from only being available as an intravenous infusion, so an IV infusion. Now it can be given as a subcutaneous injection. People do have to be observed for an hour. So it's not necessarily everywhere. If anyone is, has COVID, that this is going to be available for anyone and everyone who, who contracts COVID. But it is something that is being available. We hope to make it more accessible to people in our region as time goes on. But you know, the, getting a vaccine is much, much, much easier. And this will cut, this monoclonal antibody therapy kind of reduces the risk of hospitalization, cuts it in half. But if you really want to prevent getting hospitalized, get the vaccine ahead of time. Alright. Last one for today, ivermectin. Some people may have heard about this. I'm not really sure. The origin of this ivermectin is a medication that is used by veterinarians to treat parasites in livestock and pets. It is not safe for humans. It can cause significant organ damage. There is no evidence that is effective against COVID-19. It is not safe. Please don't take it. Please don't share any information about taking it. It is absolutely not safe. Don't do it. Again, I, the mind boggles about why this is being promoted, but it's not safe. So please don't do it. That's it for me.
Alright, I finally got it. I finally found my cursor. Thanks, Mimi. So there was lots of love in the chat, by the way. Thanks and nice job to everyone. There are a couple of questions in there. And I would encourage people, if you want to, that's a great place to put any questions or comments that you want addressed. But before, maybe, well, Mimi, why don't you go ahead and address those?
Absolutely. So, so Roger Nichols had a question about, about the number of staffed beds in Region 6 and how many were filled. What, I'm sorry, because I don't have the exact number, Roger, but when I just clicked on the OHA site, hospital capacity, I think we're kind of in the same space, those numbers that I have. I know that, so and, and hospital capacity changes so rapidly day to day. I can't say that those numbers are exactly the same. But our hospitals, for a variety of reasons, are really not just physical beds, but as I talked about before, staffing availability. And as you can envision, being able to take care of a person with COVID also requires more time in terms of putting on personal protective equipment, keeping the staff safe and everything. So we are, our hospital staff are, I, I just, I don't know what to say. I don't want to say that they're at a breaking point because I know these people and they will keep working. But it's just a tremendous strain on the staff and the system and their families. And then Nicole had the question, change in regards to fever-free. So fever, fever-free, there's lots of different things about being without a fever, but specifically in terms of COVID-19, if a person has COVID-19 and they are not hospitalized, so just your average bear who has COVID-19, they may return to work after 10 days of isolation, as long as they remain without a fever for that 24 hours before they go. So it's just 24 hours before they go back to work. But also, you definitely want them feeling well. So, you know, well, if people are still feeling poorly, they should not be going back to work. Their symptoms don't have to be resolved with the, completely resolved with the exception of being without a fever for 24 hours. Oh, Jill has a great question. What is the length of time of immunity if somebody gets COVID-19? And that's a great question, which I don't have a precise answer for you Jill. I know that people are working on this. The working, the way that COVID is treated was sort of
The working, the way that COVID is treated, sort of within our medical community within Oregon, is that it's about 90 days. If someone has COVID, sort of test positive for COVID twice within that 90-day period, we consider it to be sort of the same case. Because as you remember, sometimes people can, those PCR tests can be positive for weeks on end. But and and in terms of the Delta variants, I don't know if there's a difference about that, if if it will make people and people, excuse me, immune for a longer or shorter period of time. I don't know that that's been evaluated yet, but that's a great question.
All right, thank you. So great place to put questions in the chat there. We'll go to the commissioners. You guys, either one of you have any questions today?
Yeah, I got a short one, Chair. I'll go quickly. Dr. McDonald, in your presentation, you stated that Wasco County was hovering around 65%, but in a press release, I see that that we've used the number 68. I like the number 68 a whole lot better than 65, so.
Yes. I'm sorry, Commissioner Kramer. And I know what happens is when you look at the, sometimes our numbers are tallied as 16 and up. And sometimes their tally it is 18 and up. Sometimes they have the federal data and sometimes they don't. So I like that 68 number two. So I'm not trying to undercut it. But yeah, and so apologies for that.
No, no apology needed. Just like I said, I read that and I thought we're getting close to those bigger numbers that that we need and and also this morning, I got to hear the coffee break and I think the counterpart in Clickatack County was on and and stating that their numbers are at 38, 39%. With us being a regional, basically a regional hub is has that got anything to do with the spike numbers for us? Are we, are we tracking our neighbors? Working with our neighbors to to try to help with those numbers?
Right. That is an excellent question. And I think sort of, I think that's also a really good point of clarification is that people who are hospitalized in Region Six, that does include our neighbors, people who, thank you so much for for bringing that to our attention. People from Clickatack County who are, you know, are hospitalized at Mid-Columbia Medical Center. You are absolutely right. In terms of trying to work together, I do know, for example, that like our certainly at Mid-Columbia Medical Center, One Community Health, those care providers absolutely take care of people who live across the river in Clickatack County and Skamania County. So I know that the medical care is there. We do every week or every other week or so have kind of a regional, which includes our neighbors across the river, call with healthcare providers to see what's happening and what's available at the hospitals and with other healthcare departments. So we do try and sort of keep an eye on that. It is a little trickier just being in different states, but you're absolutely right that what happens with our neighbors makes a big difference of what's happening here. So thanks so much for that good point.
Well, thank you for that clarification. And again, thank you and and Director Campbell for all the work that you guys do. Appreciate.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yeah, good morning. Thanks again for a wonderful presentation. Wow, there's just so much going on. You know, I'm going to start from the bottom and go up. So the ivermectin that you talked about, I just wanted to comment that you know, you read about it on the news and social media. Well, my neighbor took it. So it's here. And I know that my neighbor's been promoting it to their friends in church and and things. So lest you think it's not happening here, it is. So it's not just a something happening somewhere else. So that's just a comment, unfortunately. The question I have, another question I have is on the monoclonal antibody therapy. I mean, you hear about that there are clinics around the country, you know, doing these treatments. And I was wondering, is this something that somebody would go through their primary care provider to access and and is it available here in the gorge or is it something people have to go to Portland for?
Yeah, those are all excellent questions. You will notice that I didn't address them directly in my talk. I will say that I've been out of town for a couple of days and just came back, but it is something that OHA is promoting. It is something that we are trying, we for the general medical community and NCPHD in specific are trying to make more available in our region because it is not widely available in the region at this minute. And also, again, because our primary care clinics are so swamped right now with shortage of staff, et cetera, et cetera. That would be sort of a whole nother thing. If you think of like testing be another thing and taking care of patients and then vaccinations. And then this is like a whole nother thing that can, you know, it's only as a promoted as outpatient therapy. That's a big load, a big heavy lift for them, I would say. So we are going to be working with OHA to see if there's some potential for something like that, either a place where we could refer people to in the Portland metro area or have, OHA has been just really great in coming out. For example, they did a testing event at the NCPHD parking lot on Sunday. Last Sunday, there'll be another one this upcoming Sunday. So kind of that mobile approach to it. So more to come on that one. I just don't have tons of details right now.
Okay, thank you. The next question I have is is, when you talked about the the third shot for immunocompromised, is there a specific definition of what is, who you know, compromised? And is that something that you'll be talking to people about as they come into the health department to get a shot?
Right. So there's a pretty specific, and I'm sorry, because I think I had it on my last slide, so I don't have it on this one. Pretty specific criteria. So it's not kind of the blanket criteria, but it is very, people who are on immunosuppressive medications, that's probably a better way to put it. So for example, people who are getting chemotherapy, people who perhaps have had an organ transplant and they're on medications which lowers their immune response, so they don't reject their organ. People who are on certain medications, for example, treatment of like rheumatoid arthritis or psoriasis, there are some medications. So it's very specific. So what they should do is either reach out to their specialist or their primary care provider to see if they are someone who should get that. That's the probably the best way to do it. You can go on the OHA website to and see who might be available for that. But it is confusing. I completely agree. Like finishing the series versus getting a boost. So we do try and educate people as they come through and we've asked our colleagues as well in the medical community to help educate people.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And is it, do you think that the booster would actually be different than the third shot? Is it, is it going to be?
No, I don't think so. I think it will just be either. And I think it will be available for Johnson &amp; Johnson, too. That's what we understand. So it will be just the same vaccine. I don't think they're going to change the dosage from what I understand, because you know, that would look at different types of testing and boy, that would be a heartache. But I think it will be just this, the same thing. It's just the timeframe. So in other words, if someone had completed their series earlier this summer, but they were a solid organ transplant person or a person who had received a solid organ transplant and was on those medications, they would be eligible to get that third dose right now instead of having to wait that eight months from finishing their series.
Okay, so it's basically the same thing. Yeah, okay. And then you did mention the trials that are going on for kids under 12, but that, to clarify, it's five to 11-year-olds, right? It's not zero to 11.
Well, those are, I mean, those are happening as well.
Okay.
But the first, the availability that they're anticipating in late fall or early winter is that five to 11-year-old age range. You're absolutely right.
Okay. And just a comment, well, maybe you can tell me if my thinking is right on this. So you mentioned how a vaccinated person can can still shed the virus unknowingly, especially if you don't have symptoms. So kind of the way I'm thinking about this is those of us who are vaccinated really need to think about when we're around unvaccinated children, for instance, or unvaccinated friends and family, you know, that that's really who we need to be caring for and thinking about when we should be doing that masking and social distancing is really, those are the vulnerable folks right now. And even though we do tend to think those of us who are vaccinated, you know, we think, well, we've, we're okay. But really, we do need, whenever we're around children, you know, especially in that, you know, that are not vaccinated. So is that, is that good thinking?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a great way to think about it. It's true. I think one of the other things that has changed, again, as more information comes in, is that the recommendation now, if you're a person who's been vaccinated and you have a close contact with someone who's tested positive for COVID, the recommendation is that you do get a COVID test, you know, three to five days after that exposure and that you are very, very, you don't necessarily have to completely isolate, but that you were exceptionally conscientious about mask-wearing, hand hygiene, all of that. And if you have any symptoms at all of COVID-19, absolutely getting tested, but then also if you have to wait a little bit until you can get tested, being in isolation until you can find out whether or not you've had COVID or you've contracted COVID.
Oh, that's great. And that actually leads into my very last question, I promise, about testing. So my understanding is you can get some over-the-counter tests, for instance, at the drugstore. Is that the same test that you're using at the health department?
Yeah, I think it depends on the drugstore. So and I apologize because I don't have all the data on that as well. This kind of the guidance is sort of changing about whether those kind of count or not. I think that, I think they are accurate, the ones that are available for, if if you were, for example, to be tested at a Walgreens, in other words, if they test you there and then send you the results, those are 100% considered appropriate tests and you wouldn't have to have another test. Some of the, and it just depends on where people get it. Then we request that they have sort of an additional authorized COVID-19 test. So I don't have an exhaustive list of which is which, because as you can envision, new things come out all the time. But it's something that we're trying to keep track of. I think the more tests that are available, the better, you know, the more they're here. You know, i- if it's going to help you, help people know whether they could possibly transmit the disease, I I think access to testing is, yeah, the more the better.
Okay, so basically, if someone were to get a test at Walgreens, they tested positive, would you, would that be, they should call you, right? And and get some advice at that point, would you?
Yes. If a person, for example, if they, you know, did a home test kit and it was positive, please, please, please contact your primary care provider. If you don't have one or your friendly neighborhood local public health, absolutely, one, because then we'd like to continue to do our case investigation and give people advice on what steps next to take.
Okay, perfect. And it's still a follow-up to that. So just, you know, there's been a lot of maybe non-COVID sickness going around with colds, headaches, coughs, upper respiratory illnesses, and people are testing negative for COVID at the health district and and probably through Walgreens or whatever. But how, how necessary, if you have symptoms like that, is it then to follow up and get a a PCR test through your primary care provider? Because it's, it's confusing for people. They're test negative, but then they don't really quite believe it because they've got all these symptoms. And then they're, you know, say, well, if you don't believe it, then go get a PCR test. I don't know.
Yeah, so I think there's a couple ways to think about it. If someone has been, if they have a high chance that, so if they have been exposed to someone with COVID and they have kind of little mild symptoms and they test negative, absolutely, a PCR test would be indicated, especially if that person is not vaccinated. So in other words, the more likely you are to truly have COVID, the more likely you want to have the best test available. So in other words, if that sort of over-the-counter one is negative, but there's still a high chance that you do have COVID, please reach out and get a PCR test. If it is highly, so you're vaccinated, you haven't, everyone in your bubble is vaccinated, you never go around to anyone else, you have a runny nose and you test negative, you're probably negative. So and it's tricky. I don't, you know, I'm not, you know, I think all, everyone in a, you know, on the planet has now become a mini epidemiologist. But, you know, it is, it is confusing, but the more, oh, I'm sorry, and Steve Kramer. PCR test, thank you, Commissioner Kramer, stands for polymerase chain reaction, which doesn't help at all in terms of what it means. But what it does mean is that that is the test that is more specific, more sensitive to picking up whether or not, and more specific actually. So if somebody really has COVID, that test is more likely to pick it up than the antigen test. So thank you so much for calling us out on that.
Yeah, I think that the common term for that PCR test is the brain tickle test. It's just one that goes a little bit further back than the one, the antigen test. I don't know. That's what people tell me. So it's more uncomfortable, I guess. So that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you very much for all, for listening and answering all my questions. So great. Thanks.
That's it?
Sorry.
No, it's fine. I I have a couple. I I'll just kind of continue on the testing because I have an interesting story, kind of. So my daughter, who kind of works in California, lives kind of up here, but kind of in, anyway, it's very confusing, but she was sent out on business to Florida and she's vaccinated, but of course she got COVID while she was out there. So and then then she came up here because it didn't make any sense for her to be in California. So she came up here. And so it's been a challenge. The whole testing thing has really been kind of a challenge for her, which has been kind of marginally frustrating for me because, you know, she got tested and I think in California and it was positive, obviously. Then she came up here, she got tested, still positive. And then eventually she did one of those Walgreens tests that Kathy mentioned. Oh, it wasn't positive, you know, she was, thought it was great. Then she got another PCR test, still positive. And then actually last Sunday, she went to your testing clinic, that's North Central Public Health and got, actually got the result back yesterday and she's very happy because it finally was negative. A PCR test was negative. So that's what her employer wanted, as well as a note from a doctor or something. But I think my comment is, you know, getting those tests has not been very easy and it's actually been very expensive. You know, they're not free. I mean, they went to the clinic, you know, it was free there, but she went and got another test in the river and it was a hundred and some dollars for her to get the test at at a doctor's office because she had, you know, just for the test. And it's like the the sad thing about that is that, you know, it doesn't really help when people can't get tested easily and, you know, reliably. And it's expensive because people, many people are just like, well, I'm not going to get tested. And then they don't really know. And then they don't know kind of what their status is. So anyway. So those tests at Walgreen are not always accurate. I can tell you that.
Well, and if I may interject, and I think this is a really good point, Commissioner, is that employers should not require a negative test before allowing people back to work because we know that people that the chance of them being contagious, if they've had a mild to moderate case of COVID, it goes down dramatically after 10 days. However, there may be still some of those little viral particles floating around. So literally weeks afterwards, people can have a positive, have a positive. So in Oregon, no one, no employer should require that their employee have a negative test and it's incredibly frustrating. And I feel like within the business community, I am not quite sure why that practice is still happening. I mean, certainly, you know, it's not something that OSHA recommends or requires. So I feel sad for your daughter that she went to all this trouble. And I think that it is, it's not helpful for employers. But to your comment about that you are 100% correct in terms of that, you know, that the, it is a challenge to have testing available. And again, part of it is that healthcare community really shifted away. We just, we had such little demand and shifted into giving vaccines and doing other things. And now it's come back at North Central Public Health District. We now have antigen testing available four hours a day, five days a week, zero cost to a person who signs up. The only thing is people who are eligible for this type of test are just people who come into close contact with someone or people who have symptoms. So for those job ones that no one should be requesting anyway, those are not tests that we're able to perform here.
All right. And to be clear, her employer's in California, so.
Yeah, well, they shouldn't do it there. I don't know that they shouldn't do it there either. They're not recommending that in California either.
Not only a negative test, but a note from the doctor.
Yeah, that's just, that's just a burden on the medical community.
A huge burden, yeah. A huge burden, yeah. Okay, so question on the booster and just related, related to Johnson &amp; Johnson. So how is that, because most of the boosters are related to the, the other shots? And people that have Johnson &amp; Johnson tests, we get one shot. What's, what's that situation? Is it the same? Is it different? Is there any booster, no booster?
Nothing, one, nothing has come out that is definitive, but word on the street in epidemiology land is that. In the same timeframe, so about eight months from when you had your Johnson &amp; Johnson, you would be eligible to get a booster. But that is, I haven't seen it in writing. I just, you know, heard it from. You know, clinical epidemiologists and things like that. That's what is anticipated. So for those who did get Johnson &amp; Johnson, there is anticipation that a booster will be recommended at some point.
Okay, but the, the shot you would get if you've got a Johnson &amp; Johnson, you stay with that. You're not switching back and forth.
That is correct.
Okay. I haven't heard anybody say that. I've heard nobody talk about Johnson &amp; Johnson in terms of boosters.
I know. People feel left out in the cold.
Fine, I don't like shots. If I don't need a booster, I'm all down with that. Okay, that's all I have. I actually just had one, maybe if you could. Maybe make a couple comments. So obviously we're trying to still get folks to get vaccinated. There's been lots of challenges, you know, in terms of numbers and hospitalizations and people getting really sick and passing away and stuff. What do you say today, you know, to people that still kind of are in this, maybe on the fence or somewhat near the fence that. Why should someone, you know, really consider it if they've been kind of putting it off at this point? Any, any, anything you can. You know, try to encourage people to, to really take that step?
So I think that, you know, as. Always encouraging people to get information about their healthcare from healthcare professionals. Certain television personalities are not healthcare professionals. There are. I mean, this sounds so sort of conspiracy theorist, but like, there are bad actors at work deliberately promoting misinformation. They do it. I don't know that it's necessarily to make people sick, but it is to make people click. Ooh, I just made that up. So it is really to get people to pay attention to their sites and then to promote that and to give this. Salacious information that will make people watch their shows and it's not correct. So get your healthcare information from a healthcare professional that you know and trust. Take care of yourself and take care of others who are around you. Commissioner Schwartz was talking about everyone who's under 12 doesn't even have the opportunity to be vaccinated. There are all these kids who are going back to school. They're in groups. You know, it's very hard for me to understand why people would not want to protect them and I, and my thought is that. That there's a, again, not that people are bad, but that they don't believe that, that this vaccine. Does anything or that it protects people. And the reality is, the science is the vaccine protects people, protects themselves, protects. Others and, you know, I guess that would be, those are kind of my two main things.
Thank you. And Dr. McDonald is a healthcare professional and I do trust you. So thank you for all that you do and the words that you tell us. It's greatly appreciated. Shelley, I didn't know if you have anything else you wanted to bring forward?
Thank you, Commissioner Hegi. No, we would just like to, again, express our. Thanks for your kind words and the county's continued support of NCPHD and all that you do to help us through this trying time. So again, to everyone out there, thank you. And, and of course, thanks to Dr. McDonald for all she does for our community.
All right. Well, thanks again for being here. I'm hopeful that next time we chat that things will be better. And we'll be on a kind of declining a number of places and things are getting better. So thanks again for being here. Have a great day.
Thank you.
All right. We are moving on to, we have a couple of minutes before we hit our first appointment. We'll go to our first item, which is a youth think on our discussion list. And I don't know if, I think Debbie's here. There you go. Do you want to, and we, go ahead and take, the ball is yours.
Okay, I think we have two on there. I think the easiest one to start off with. Help me Kathy, is it the Classroom Champions contract? Okay, that's, we contracted with this organization last year. This would be renewing and increasing the licenses to be able to offer this program. We've met with the Channelwood Elementary School, also met with Deufur yesterday and there's interest in that. So this falls within our federal grant and because it is, meets over that threshold. And well, Kristin has looked over it. We've made sure that the contract language is acceptable. So it's getting your final approval for that contract.
All right. Any questions on that? Looks like a great program. If anybody doesn't really know what it is. It's, it's bringing like athletes in to talk to our kids in school and, you know, providing with some really great things that kind of encourage them and. I think it looks great. So I assume the program's going well.
Yeah, it's all, we're, we're kind of getting a slow start, start last year just because of COVID. But we've got some real interest from, from some teachers. It's all virtual. And they've been doing it for 10 years. There's a lot of really good research behind it, but it really fits in. They were doing social emotional learning before it became a buzzword. So it's a good group. And just sometimes I think people might feel like, okay, athletes, are these the best role models? These are thoroughly vetted.
There are good examples of athletes out there. There's some bad ones. It's like society. But it sounds like a great program. Any questions for Debbie on this? And I don't know Molly, if you had anything else to add?
Mr. Chair, seeing Commissioner Schwartz take your head with no questions, I'll move to approve. The Classroom Champion Service Agreement for Wasco County in the Youth Think Program.
And I'll second that.
Excellent. We have a motion and a second. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There are votes yes. All right. Pacific Source Grant.
So this one's a little bit more tricky. We were actually, I was approached by Chelsea. Ruder, who I believe is trying to log on. And she can give you kind of the, the ins and outs. I think in the information that Kathy shared in the pack, it, it gives you. Some clarity as far as how you think. Wasco County got involved in this. This has really been, I think, a capacity issue. I know they have. This, the Columbia Gorge Postpartum Support. Have been, I don't know if it's close to a year yet, have been working on their 501(c)(3). They have everything together. Pacific Source approached them after a letter of intent saying this. Project that you have sent a letter of intent on really sounds interesting. We'd like you to apply for the funding. They have to either be, have that 501(c)(3) number. Or have a fiscal agent that will support. I know they reached out to North Central Public Health. Shelley and I even talked about that. There just is not the capacity with all of the things that we just spent on. So it does fit into some initiatives that you think would, is wanting to be able to support. So we're asking for the opportunity for at least to allow this group to apply for the funds. And then, you know, hopefully at that time they will have their 501(c)(3) status. Or, you know, how we can work with Kristin to make sure that. We, we have all the legal requirements and the county is not feeling under any type of liability whatsoever on that.
Okay, I see Chelsea Ruder's here with us. You want to say something?
We asked Chelsea if in case there was any questions that we couldn't answer from the commissioners or staff to. So we could really make sure that we're fully transparent and everybody can feel good either way, how we're moving forward.
Okay. Chelsea, I didn't know if you want to say anything. If you do, you're, you can reveal yourself and chat.
Um, I don't think I have anything to add to that. I just, you know, what we were looking for. I guess for the Columbia Gorge Postpartum Support and the fiscal sponsorship with Youth Think was really just like a pass through. They wouldn't be responsible for any of the grant requirements or even like implementing the programs. But we did offer to promote some of Youth Think's programs such as the Toddlers to Teens. And we would be able to get those families that we support through this peer counseling program into the T2T. When they. Are, when they meet the age requirements for their kids. So really, we were just looking for a pass through and we thought that this would be a great way to get connected with Youth Think. And to start serving families at a younger age.
Well. Collaboration, cooperation, sounds good. Tyler, did you have anything? Or are you, are you okay with this? It sounds like we need consensus on this, pretty much.
Yeah, probably. I mean, my only concern is, is I think Wasco County ends up being the grant recipient. And then we're passing that through to an agency that's not yet a for-profit entity. And, you know, there may be some contracting challenges there, you know, have to go out for. Bid potentially. I, I can't remember what the grant amount was. And, you know, because we are the grant agency. Then we also end up being on, responsible for ensuring that. The work gets done and the dollars are spent appropriately and those kinds of things. So I've got a little bit of a challenge with this. You know, I just certainly don't want to see the, the services not out there, but it's really, you know, one that's not really in our scope. Of course, services and then the other thing is that. The unknown piece of accepting these funds and accepting the program responsibilities, even though it is a. You know, it's passed through, but we're still the granting agency. And the fiscal agent and there are a lot of responsibilities that come along with that, so.
Yep. Okay, well, thanks. Appreciate the comments. I think there's, if I'm correct, Debbie, I mean, you're still working with Kristin on trying to work. All of the details out. I mean, so.
At this point, it's, it's an application. No grant has been received. And I think Molly, you were gonna maybe respond, help us Tyler on some clarity, because on that to help.
Yes, so I think when Chelsea spoke, they're still in the process of working through to their, their status. They have insurance, they are an entity. At this moment, they would just be considered a for-profit entity rather than a non, nonprofit. So working through that piece, this truly is at the application. Stage with consensus, then I'll direct Debbie to start working with Kristin. As soon as we hear or we have any kind of indication. To make sure that we protect the pieces of Wasco County as far as any liability or, or financial responsibility. So at, at this point, it is still in application and the entity is still working towards their nonprofit status. It's a local grant, so I feel like they. The, the grantor, if we are to receive it, will be really flexible and work with us because it's, we've worked locally with them in the past. And so I do believe that they will be very open to the conversation on. The entity changing over to a 501(c)(3).
And some of this is. Is, you know, definitely, you know, COVID related, as Chelsea put in the, the chat, that the. Application was completed back in February. Some of you that are waiting to get some stabs, you know how all that, that works. And I, I think again, it's, and I appreciate Tyler saying that. You know, it's kind of having that foresight of being able to say, hey, he, he believes in that, that the service and the importance. It's being able to, hey, raise some of those red flags to make sure that we're ready. And I think in this application process, hearing those, that's, that's going to help. You think is very interested in these partnerships. Working on this, the more upstream we can get, the more parents. Before they have children, right after they have, to be able to have the skill set. To be able to be more effective in that way is going to benefit us all on that. So it's just like you said, Scott, trying to, you know, to collaborate and make sure a little. Function on an electronic. Application doesn't throw everything out where we can't help people.
Well, Commissioner Kramer, you had a question?
Yeah, I guess my question was two-part. Ms. Ruder answered half of it there with that comment in the chat. The other was the application deadline is, is coming up. And when will this be? If, if it, the, if the application is accepted, when would the grant? The, the, the money come through on the grant? Would that give the, the organization more time for their 501(c)(3) status is where I was going with that? So, thank you.
It could. So we have reached out or we had to wait 100 and. It was like, I think 180 days before we could reach back out to the IRS to see where our application is at and to get it bumped up. To move through that process a lot faster. They will not be done reviewing the grants for another month or month and a half. And then funds will be coming probably a month after that. So if we do receive the 501(c)(3) status, by that time we can just transfer that over at that point.
Thanks, Chelsea. All right. So really you're just looking for consensus to kind of move forward and work together and see if you can work it out. You'll be back to us and about this in the future if everything happens well, right?
Right. And it's, you know, definitely Kathy has worked with me on, we, Kathy Clark and Kathy Schwartz. Trying to keep, are the commissioners and administration. Very aware of what things are going, so you're never caught off guard and, and all that. So making sure that you guys are the, the first to receive information as opposed to after.
Sounds good. I'm good with it. Commissioners, thumbs up, few thumbs up, perfect. All right. That's consensus, move forward and look forward to hearing about it in the future. Good luck.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, very good. All right, we're a little bit behind. But I'm gonna go ahead and just, just before we go into our first appointment, which is a planning grant agreement with Dr. Housley Glover. I'm gonna just open it up for public comment, general public comment. I don't want to lose anybody that maybe was here at the beginning of the meeting and have to make you wait for another hour or two. But if anyone has some burning thing you want to bring to the commission and public comment, you know, feel free to unmute yourself and we would take that right now. And I will hopefully, we can do that later as well. But if somebody can't stay with us for the next hour or two, then I want to give you an opportunity right now. Feel free to unmute yourself. If people are on the call.
Hi there.
Yeah.
I, this is my first time to a meeting.
Okay, could you just introduce yourself and make sure we know who we're talking to?
Sure, I'm Ash Harris. I'm a wildlife rehabilitator at the Rowena Wildlife Clinic. And I just, my question really is, after each. Each appointment, do you open it to public comment or is this the time to make a public comment?
So if we have something on the agenda, then probably, and I'm assuming you want to talk about the APHIS landfill update?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so we will, we'll get to that a little bit later than probably 11, but hopefully maybe we'll catch up. And I'll try to kind of open it up, so maybe we can get some comments at that time.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Something not on the agenda? Going, going on, okay, thank you. All right, planning, Kelly. I assume you're here. There you are. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, for the record. Oh, it is morning. I've been up really since five this morning, so it feels like afternoon for me. So for the record, Kelly Housley Glover, interim planning director. Before you today, we have two grants. One is a letter from the. One is a letter from the Department of Land Conservation and Development informing the commission and Wasco County that they've been able to scrounge up and find us an additional $10,000 for our National Scenic Area Grant. So they, they obviously don't cover the whole cost of running the program, but it, it does cover approximately roughly every year about half of running that program. So we'll need your, your signatures and we'll submit that back to Department of Land Conservation and Development. The other piece ahead of you today is I'm requesting a letter of support. We've been encouraged by our regional rep from the Department of Land Conservation and Development, Scott Edelman, to pursue a technical assistance grant related to our work with periodic review and the comprehensive plan update. You'll remember one of our promises to the Land Conservation Development Commission was to provide resources to our under-resourced neighbors, particularly a lot of counties in eastern Oregon are one or two-person shops. So we wanted to be able to utilize our experience and the process, including many of that public outreach methods, to help our partners also update their comprehensive plans. So they've encouraged us to apply for a small grant to complete that work. And really what that looks like is a little bit of staff time to summarize all that work and the resources that we have available. Pretty some boilerplate templates for our partners to use in other counties. And then hire a graphic artist to make it look very pretty and very usable. So any questions?
Well, thanks, Kelly. So it looks like we're looking for a motion to approve the grant. And then I think we just see consensus on the letter. So questions for Kelly on either one of these items? No questions. You're so thorough. We know exactly what's going on. So do we have a motion to approve the, the LCD grant?
Sure. I'll move to approve the Department of Land Conservation and Development 2021-2023 Gorge Grant Agreement.
Do we have a second?
I will second the motion.
All right. We have a motion, a second and discussion on a motion.
Just Mr. Chair, for the record, I want to thank the Department of Land Conservation Development for, for a little bit of extra money and encourage them also to keep working in that direction for a little bit more. So, thank you, sir.
Yep. I would agree. And I also thank some of the gorge commissioners, because I know that some of the gorge commissioners actually encourage the DLCD to provide more funding to us. So thank, we appreciate the gorge commission helping us kind of move this forward. We, we are, we aren't there, as Kelly said, to cover the, all the costs, but more is better. So that's good. All right. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes. Thank you very much. That passes. And then we're just looking for consensus on the letter of support. Comments? Got thumbs up? Two thumbs up, three thumbs up. All right. Apply our signatures. Anything else, Kelly?
I just appreciate your time so much and we will be back before you, beginning in October, where you'll see a lot more of the department. So I'm looking forward to spending a lot more time with you soon.
All right. And what that means, what Kelly is actually saying is our packets are going to be massive because there's going to be many, many pages of reading. Because anything coming from planning is a lot of words. So thanks for the work you guys do, Kelly, all your staff, and hope you're doing well. All right. We will, look at that, we're a little bit had a schedule. We'll go ahead and go to our Public Works Director, Arthur Smith, on the road rally. But before we do, there's Arthur. I just wanted to give your road crew kudos. I was, I saw them out yesterday. They were out painting fog lines on, up and over Seven Mile, which is where I live. And I just want to tell you that your crew is awesome. They did an awesome job. It was very well done. And anybody that doesn't really value fog lines, try, go driving around in fog and have no fog lines with black roads. It's, it's no fun. So top of Seven Mile gets a fair bit of kind of different weather than we get down here in the valley. So it's much appreciated and your guys are awesome.
Thank you. I'll take full credit for that. No, I'll pass it on. So anyway, for the record, Arthur Smith, Public Works Director for Wasco County. So there's a couple of items before you this morning for consideration. The first is, I received a request from the Oregon Trail Rally Group. They would like to hold their 2021 Road Rally here in Wasco County. And they're asking for Sunday, September 7th. So for those of you, the last time they actually were permitted was in 2019. They held it over three different stages in Wasco County. So the Oregon Trail Rally is actually a timed event. It's kind of these smaller, more nimble cars. You know, they don't race side by side on the road stages. They're timed events. So they come up to the stage. They start, the guy drives as fast as he can, gets a time, goes to the next stage. And so then they take those times and compute them and declare a winner. This year, they're asking for four stages. The three that they had used, and they have used those actually for more years than I can remember, probably four or five years. The, the starve-out stage, which is a portion of Endersby Cut Off, and then a large portion of a private road, which I think is owned by the Dillons out in the Deuford area. Another stage is, they call it Boyd Loop, even though it doesn't touch Boyd Loop, very rural roads, Hastings Ridge and Stuber Road. I think maybe only one resident out there and they actually support it. Deer Run, that's Fax Road and Mason Road, and the Peters, they actually support that. The key is, and the reason I'm bringing it before you is because OTR has actually asked to add a fourth stage this year. And that's a portion of Five Mile Pleasant Ridge and Japanese Hollow Road. So in the past, when we have gone through the permit process with them, part of that where they will send out letters to the locals stating, hey, we're interested in having our event. We wanted to let you know, do you have any concerns? And then oftentimes the board is inundated with ugly nasty letters and emails saying, how could you let this happen? We hate this, et cetera, et cetera. And so I didn't want it to come as a shock to you that if they ask for a fourth stage that they've never run on before, it's very possible that many landowners could be calling you or writing you, asking what is going on, et cetera, et cetera. So, because they, they typically don't contact me, right? A landowner will contact one of you and, and then I didn't want you to be caught by surprise on this. So, but because it doesn't do anything for the county roads, except if, you know, if you've looked at the pictures, I sent you some typical examples. And it's kind of exciting and there's action and all the dust and the, you know, all the excitement is all our rock and road finds and things being blown off of the road. And then, you know, we have to go back and monitor it and they hire a contractor to put the roads back in good shape. So I'm sure it's really exciting for the participants. It doesn't do the county roads a lot of good. However, these are really rural roads. And so it's, it's, you know, in the grand scope of things, the benefit to the, the communities, because I know the city of Deuford supports it. And I know a lot of the landowners, actually, they let them use their private land for part of the race and actually as a spectator site. So I think there's a large portion that follows this sport that actually is in support. I'm not going to be in opposition to it, but I wanted you to know that they are asking to run their rally here again and that they're asking for a stage that they've never run on before. So there could be some blowback from some of those landowners.
Okay. Thanks, Arthur. Questions for Arthur?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Not many questions, but I echo the same comments personally. I don't like what happens to our roads. A lot of these are rural and are used by several folks throughout the year. And as long as Mr. Smith is happy with the agreement that's made with OTR to put these back the same as or in better shape. I'd be good with the first three, but I do have an issue with the fourth stage. The ridge to nowhere. If, if I remember right, that we did have some issues with part of that. The last time this was brought up, and I do believe that I want to make sure that, that all of those property owners and folks that live out there are, are brought up to speed and communicated with so that nobody is left out of the loop on, on this section. And like I said, I'll go along with it because the, the other three stages, everybody is in favor of that. But ridge to nowhere is a red flag for me. And if OTR can, can commit and guarantee us that they will talk and visit with everybody on that stretch, I'm good with moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Anything, Kathy?
Not really. I really appreciate Steve's insight on that. Always amazed what comes before me as a county commissioner, I have to say. This is a new one, so.
You didn't know you're have to deal with road rallies?
No, I, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm good with it, but it's interesting. But yeah, I, I'll go along with what Steve said 100%. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's pretty exciting event. I mean, it's a big time sporting event. If you ever, if you've ever been to it, I never have, but I've seen lots of pictures. Arthur, just clarification. So basically, the agreement we have with the organizers is that they can use the roads, but they cannot leave the roads in worse shape than they were when, like we had them. So I mean, if there's any damage to the roads at all that we want fixed, is it, is it true that they will fix it?
Yes. So, um, so when we, so to address the first point, so I, what I will do is, is contact the organizers for Oregon Trail Rally and tell them you have permission to go out and seek the, or to, to speak with the landowners on this, of the, this new stage. And I will basically tell them, if I don't get 100% landowner agreement, I will not permit that stage, right? And if one landowner says, I do not want this to happen and, and has problems, I would not permit that stage. So they, right now, I know for sure, three stages, there's 100, literally 100% landowner agreement that they're okay with it. To get to the second point, so yeah, they, they actually file with us, they have a, they have a, an insurance policy and actually a security deposit. And actually, it's $10,000 because that way, if they want to walk away, they're walking away from a big chunk of change. So no, they, they hire a contractor. It takes some of my time, but I, you know, we go, go past and inspect the roads and say, look, this road needs graded. This road, you blew all the rock off it. We need to add rocks. So yes, we, we work with them and we've always had success that they, they do what they said they were supposed to do and then they repair the roads and put them back in as good or better condition. That is the number one condition for them to obtain the permit, so.
Very good. So it sounds like we generally have consensus based on everything that's been discussed. You have a good plan and I fully support that idea and have no issues with it. So, very good.
Okay. No, I just wanted to make you aware. So if you get calls from landowners, you, you kind of knew what was going on, so.
Excellent. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So the, moving on, the second item. So I was, the city of Mopin had applied for a federal land access grant to fund a project. And it's a pedestrian bicycle facility project, kind of runs through the city of Mopin, across the Deschutes River Bridge to connect to, better connect the BLM recreation areas. The only reason it's coming before us is that part of the project would actually use a, a short portion of Bake Oven Road. So as you go across the Deschutes River Bridge, past Mopin, you hang a left, you're on a county road on Bake Oven Road. And so from that point there, to the Bake Oven Creek Bridge falls under this project. The scope right now is some kind of shared or like a multi-use path. I told them I'm not a real advocate of curbs and sidewalks because we plow a lot of heavy snow down there. And if it's the only curb and sidewalk on one side of the road, it just, it, it doesn't work well. So the design team with ODOT is, is happy to work with that. Again, the only, the only real issue is we, we would need to be cosigners on the agreement. It will not cost us anything. The state will pay for all costs, all overruns. There's no match. But the county would need to accept the improvements to the system, i.e. that, if they build the multi-use walking and bike path. And we would just need, it would be part of our system then. It would be, so for future use, if it got damaged or needed repairs, we would be on the hook to, to do those. And I actually, I don't have an issue with that. I think this is a really good project. I'm happy the city of Mopin was successful in their application, but it does require the signatures of the board on that. So I, I actually support this project and would recommend us signing the agreement.
Great. Thanks, Arthur. Questions for Arthur?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Is all of this proposed project within the city limits? He's shaking his head yes. Who's visiting?
Yeah, I did. I was trying, my mute, I was a little slow on my mute button. Sorry. Yes, it is, Steve. The city limits for Mopin encompasses, so that portion of Bake Oven Road is actually within the city limits of Mopin, yes.
So I, I guess I'll turn my other concern over to Mr. Stone. We, we briefly touched on this this morning and I, I tend to agree with him under county obligations on, where's the page number here? I'm not seeing a page number, but it, it states in section one, county agrees to accept all maintenance responsibility. And, and I think that, that we as a county should work with the city so that the city accepts all the maintenance responsibilities as we move forward with this project. I agree with the project, but, but I think that since it's inside the city limits, I think that the county and the city probably should have a conversation about the maintenance moving forward after this project's completed. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. It does say under city obligations, city agrees to accept all maintenance responsibilities for those elements of the project constructed on city property or jurisdiction. So it might be construed anyway to think that it's, if it's in the city limits, it's within theirs. But Arthur?
Yeah, no, that, it, it's, yeah, city, no, that it's those accepted city streets. Kind of like we had county roads within the city of the Dows until they were transferred. So yeah, I, I 100% agree with Commissioner Kramer. That agreement though would have to be outside of this grant agreement. So yeah, I would, having those conversations with the city. I absolutely, I would, I would agree with that. Maybe it could be something similar to what we did with the city of the Dows. We could transfer or they could, you know, transfer that portion of road or at least have an agreement where they could maintain the, the multi-use path in the future. I guess for purposes of this agreement, I don't think we can attach that. I just, I just be mindful of that. Sorry.
All right.
Yeah, I think it just needs, there needs to be a secondary agreement. So approval contingent upon a secondary agreement with the city of Mopin to take responsibility for the maintenance of those sections of trail. You know, I don't, don't want to get into a situation where 15 years from now, this thing needs to be repaved and crack sealed, you know, similar to the waterfront trail here. And then all of a sudden, we're on the hook for that.
All right. Any other comments, questions or motion?
I think I'd just like to ask Arthur a general question, just for my own knowledge base. But if it's a county road, another entity isn't responsible for it, right? I mean, unless there's another agreement made that it's annexed into the city or whatever, but as long as it's a county road, it's, it's ours, right? To take care of.
Right. So the key is it's dedicated as a county road. So you can have a, you can have a portion of road lying within, literally, you can have it lying right next to the state highway. You could have it going through a, a city like Mopin. The dedication and responsibility is vested with us. And actually, the statute is such that we would have, the city would have to agree to take that on if we were to transfer that road. So it could, there was for years and years, in fact, over 50 years, we had county roads running right through the city of the Dows downtown, I mean, not downtown, but on the west side for years and years and years until we finally could get those transferred. There is, yeah, they are our responsibility because the dedication specifically stated us as the owner, so.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, other questions? If not, we have a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the IGA between Wasco County, City of Mopin. And ODOT for the Mopin to BLM access improvements. With the condition of a site agreement with the city of Mopin for the trail maintenance.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
All right, but motion second, any discussion?
I'm just a question, it's a trail? Or is it a bike path? I'm not, I'm not clear, Arthur. Is it a trail? That runs along the road or on the, in the. Eastman area? I I'm not clear.
Right, so right now, the actual, the actual, it has not been specifically. We have, we don't have stamped plans. I just said that, so right now, that scope is kind of open-ended.
Okay.
What we had talked about initially was, like I said, some kind of multi-use trail, you know, so both pedestrian and bicycle. Right now, I'm not sure if it could very well, it could be gravel, it could be paved right now, but that that part of the the project has not been locked down. All I know is it's not going to be curb and sidewalk, if I have anything to say about it, just because of the snow plowing and and activities just makes it hard, though. Right now, a lot of this project is still being scoped and being engineered, so.
Okay, thank you for that. That's all.
And it sounds like Arthur will have a role in commenting on that. Okay, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Everybody, yes. All right, unanimous, thank you, Arthur. That's it, anything else?
No, thank you so much. I will be sure to pass on the kind words to the paint striking crew. Yeah, they they work really hard. And and they do a really, really fine job, so thank you so much.
And it's important. People oftentimes don't understand how important it is, but I'm telling you, when you're out there driving at night and fog, those fog lines are helpful. Is the the fueling system back up yet?
We've made improvements. It's it's a larger, yeah, we have, we still have some issues. We're working with our our IS IT team. And we had a technician down here from the the fuel contractor. So yeah, we're, we're working on it. It's still a little glitchy, but that's, we're we're in better shape than now than we were last week, so.
All right, sounds good. Thanks again, Arthur. Thanks for being here. All right, moving on. We got Kayla with us talking about Munis conversion update. Kayla, welcome.
Hi, good morning, Chair. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Absolutely.
Wonderful. So I'm here to talk about software. We have. Gone live with Munis financials. So as you'll recall, a little over a year ago. Wasco County entered into an agreement to upgrade our ERP software. We went from Eden, which the county procured in 2006, to an updated software called Munis. As I said, we went live on 7-1. We're very excited. There was a lot leading up to that towards the end there. So what we've gone live with is anything to do with. Accounts receivable, accounts payable, the GL, all of the day-to-day financial functionality. And a big component of that prior to go live was working with all of the departments to analyze what their needs were going to be with the new software. We have a lot of other software that the county uses, such as in the assessment and tax department. They collect tax dollars and then turn it over to us via a software import. So we had to get that kind of going. We had to kind of work with everybody to make sure that we were going to be able to capture all of their data. But we we got it done. We went live 7-1. We've officially turned off Eden for just about everybody. And we've provided training to all of the staff and department heads. Mike was able to provide some more one-on-one training, whereas I've been covering a lot of the broader subjects. And what we've gone through the last two months since go live is just a whole lot of tweaking, looking at permissions, making sure everybody can access what they need to. And that's, that's been a pretty. Pretty heavy process, like getting some feedback. Is that, is that me?
Hear us?
Yeah, okay, there was some feedback. I'm not sure what that was. So since 7-1, we've completed a payroll parallel. So what happens next is we plan to go live with payroll and human capital management, January 1st. So what our phenomenal payroll person Brenda has done. To date is she's actually processing payroll in our old software and then having to go into Munis and configure all of our employees and all of the payroll. Steps in that software. So she's actually running them at the same time to make sure that we can. Have it ready to go and up and running on January 1. Let's see. So you see on the the one page that I provided, we're still well, well, under budget. With COVID happening, we didn't have any of the consultants travel here. We had a consultant come for just a few days. And so we've saved a lot on travel and service fees because we've been able to work remotely. What's coming up next, you'll see in the in the timeline, I've kind of put a dotted line there where as far as where we are in between go lives. And the next phase, this phase two, now that we've gone live in financials and we're actually getting some. Actual. Numbers in there. We can start configuring some of these later things. So one of those is month end and cash management. The software is a lot more robust when it comes to that sort of thing. We're able to actually import data from the bank directly. Which should streamline our bank reconciliations and all of the other month-end reconciliations that we have to do. So this is already, it will be streamlined. We've, Mike is actually going to start next week using the bank reconciliation software. To to kind of get that going and it'll be quite a bit to wade through. This first couple months. The next thing we need to work on is the ACFER builder. This, the acronym for this changed slightly over the past year. It used to be called the CAFER, but now it's the ACFER. So if you'll see that reference differently wherever you go. We have had our first phase of audit work, audit field works, our auditors were here, I believe in July or late July, early August. So in working with them, we'll be able to pull all of the data from Eden into this software. And then obviously going forward with Munis. And this essentially just helps to build our annual statements. It will ease the the burden on on Mike when he's having to use spreadsheets and whatnot to compile all of our financial reports. So that we have some sessions on this month and that will take several weeks to configure. As well as capital assets. So we. We have to run depreciation and. Basically do a light inventory of all of our capital assets as we do annually anyway in Eden. So we'll go ahead and do that in the Eden software and then we'll be able to configure all of those assets into Munis with a 7-1 effective date. So that'll come this month as well. And then Brenda is going to be doing another payroll parallel this month. And then we're going to kick off the HR recruiting and performance components of the software in October. We're looking to have one of their HR consultants come on site to work with Nicole and Brendan and myself. Currently, all of those processes are managed by a paper. You think personal action forms, address changes, et cetera. Munis has the functionality to do all of that virtually, so. We are looking forward to moving those processes in to the software. Don't think I have anything else to update you on now. I'm happy to answer any questions. It's just been a whirlwind year. Our staff has done incredible. They've been working very closely with everyone in the department. John and Tanya are just adapting really well and everyone's moving along.
Excellent, Kayla. Thank you so much. It's it's pretty exciting. I mean, you guys have obviously done an amazing job, you know, making this happen. And anybody that hasn't looked in the packet, it's, you know, we had a budget to do implementation. Our budget was 224,000 and so far, as Kayla mentioned, we're we're at 78,000 now. And it's kind of interesting, this COVID thing kind of resulted in a lot less travel for folks to come here. There was a budget for 38,000, they've only spent 17,000 so far, so. And I think, would you agree that it's like a lot of this stuff can be done remotely? I mean, I think there's a lot of stuff in the world today that, you know, people are surprised that because of we're forced into this situation. We've kind of figured out like, hey, we don't need to be bouncing all over the country doing things, we can do stuff remotely, so that's worked pretty well, I assume.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, the the software company has shared with us, you know, we're one of the first ones that had a completely virtual implementation. Which I think they were kind of taken aback by too. I mean, they had to pivot quite a bit. I mean, they're a huge, huge company. And they had to bring all of their consultants home. And so. Yeah, I I think, plus, you know, part of our plan with the software anyway is that it's it's web-based, accessible from anywhere. And that that makes it a lot easier for you all as commissioners, if you need to approve something, as well as all of our staff. If if they need to work remotely or they're out because of illness or whatever, we can still access all of this. As opposed to having to log into Eden on a county computer and hope that it opens.
That's great. All right, any other question, question, anybody have any questions for Kayla? All right, you're getting lots of thumbs up, so thank you very much, Kayla. Appreciate the work you and the whole team does, so nice job. All right.
Thank you.
You bet. All right, just a quick reminder, if you're not talking, just keep yourself muted so we don't have to get feedback. Our next presenter, I'm going to pass it over to Kathy. She's going to introduce this wonderful person to us.
Thank you, Scott. Yeah, it is my pleasure. I really wanted Kenny to come and talk to us today. So he's going to talk to us about the Mid-Columbia Community Action. And just as a reminder, it's a three-county program. It's Hood River, Wasco, and Sherman. And I really wanted Kenny LaPointe, who's our relatively new executive director since January, Kenny? Is that right?
November.
November of 2020 then. Okay, to come and talk to us about the agency, its mission, vision, some of the future planning that's going on. And just to kind of inform us, bring it to the forefront, how important this agency is to the most vulnerable citizens in our community that suffer from poverty. So with that, we're just so pleased, I am a board member and for those of you who don't know. All three counties do have a county commissioner on their board, on the board, as well as some other folks. And Kenny will, Kenny will go into that in his presentation. So thank you for being here, Kenny. I really appreciate you coming.
Thanks so much, Kathy, and thank you for having me. It's great to be here. Great to virtually meet you, Commissioner Kramer, and good to see you, Chair Haggy as well. So as Kathy mentioned, my name's Kenny LaPointe and the. Then I'm going to still claim new executive director of Community Action, have been here since November of last year. I am a Wasco County resident. I I live in the city of Mosher, where my wife and I moved. In August of last year and prior to coming to Wasco County, I was in the valley and worked for the state of Oregon's Housing Finance Agency. And Homeless Services Funding Agency as the Public Affairs Director, spent about six, six years there. Did a lot of work around statewide housing planning and wildfire recovery. And prior to being at the state level, I was the Housing and Resident Services Director for the Central Oregon Housing Authority. And we did affordable housing development as well as administration of the Housing Choice Voucher Program, formerly the Section 8 program. So I am going to, go ahead and I'm going to share my screen here. So you can see the presentation. So as Kathy mentioned, we are a three-county community action agency. Community Action is an entity that exists all across the country. There is one representing every region of our state in Oregon. We are that agency for Hood River, Wasco, and Sherman Counties. Kathy mentioned, we have a a three-county board, so we have representation from each of the counties. Obviously, Kathy is our Wasco County Commissioner Representative. We also have Andrea Mahia and Scott McKay representing Wasco County. And you can see the others from the other counties, as well as Joan Byrd from Sherman County, who is our chair. I mentioned that we we are a community action agency, so we provide housing, shelter, utility bill payment assistance. It used to be really energy assistance. We've now expanded into utility bill payments. So we're helping households keep up with their utilities, whether it's water, power, natural gas. And we also run a Firewood program in collaboration with Wasco County. And we do home weatherization as well, and I'll get more into more of the programs in a moment here. So I am proud to announce today that our agency has launched a new strategic plan. Which includes our updated mission, vision, and value statement. So you can see the mission here is to build a better future for our community through partnership and equity-centered programs. That prevent and eliminate poverty and homelessness. So this, this mission statement is new. You are actually the first to really see it in a formal presentation. It was released today. We have a number of things that are being released today, which I'll talk about in a second as well. And you have our our mission, our vision statement, as well as our agency's agreed-upon values. So I will note that we started strategic planning around February of this year. And we involved our board and our staff in multiple strategic planning sessions. And we also interviewed a number of community partners as we developed that plan. So I mentioned our core program areas and I I'm going to talk about them briefly. I've also included in the packet the information on Wasco County service numbers. So the commission could have that detail on how we are serving Wasco County. So Wasco County does receive a lion's share of the services from a service numbers perspective. So most of our clients are from the Wasco County area. From our housing side of things, we do street outreach, case management, we do rapid rehousing and homeless prevention. And we also run a hotel motel voucher program. So this is really work to help folks. Get out of homelessness, so so get them off the street and into permanent housing, obviously very challenging in the gorge due to lack of available affordable housing. We'll also be talking in a moment about how Community Action is working on that. We provide case management for folks who are experiencing homelessness or who have come out of homelessness. And we also try to prevent homelessness whenever possible. So we we realize that if we prevent homelessness, then that is one less person who may be impacted by long-term. Long-term homelessness, which comes with complications, behavioral health complications being a primary one, but many others as well. We do partner with the Mid-Columbia Housing Authority to administer some homeless prevention programs. We've actually administered, gotten out about $3 million since about middle of last year in partnership with the Housing Authority. And the Housing Authority is now administering the Oregon Emergency Rental Assistance Program, which has about $2.5 million to prevent homelessness for folks who have been impacted by COVID-19. So I mentioned the service numbers and I won't go through those, but you have them. So I'll hit on the Dow shelter site. So Mid-Columbia Community Action took over the Dow shelter. In about February of this year, we had actually been the primary entity, along with the city of the Dows, that purchased the. The PODS shelter units, I'll call them PODS, they're considered pallet shelters is what they're called. As you can see from the picture, there is nothing that has anything to do with pallets related to them. It's a little bit confusing in the name, so we we are going to be working on renaming them, renaming the community itself. But they're basically tiny homes, they have electricity, they have air conditioners, they have some, you know, plug-in units, heating, so. So, um, you know, they're, they're not, uh, certainly large, but, um, they do accommodate two folks in each unit. Um, we can serve up to thirty-six folks in the shelter site, which is down on Barge Way and Terminal. Right now, we have about thirty folks who are staying at the shelter site. Some of the units, we have chosen to only occupy them with one individual due to, um, a number of factors, including, um, the needs of the clients. Um, we have a waitlist, uh, that is nearing one hundred folks, um, who are looking to get into the shelter, um, right now. So, we do have a significant amount of demand. We partner with organizations like the Mid-Columbia Center for Living to bring services out to the site. Um, it is very much a mobile site. We, our offices are in an RV there. Um, and, uh, we have a little office space in the RV where, um, Center for Living and other service partners can meet with clients. We've, we've been pretty successful with partnership with the Housing Authority and getting our shelter guests, um, we, we call them guests, because there is no tenancy involved here, but we have been pretty successful in getting folks, um, permanent housing vouchers and getting them transitioned from homelessness into permanent housing. So, in fact, two weeks ago, we had four of our shelter guests that moved into permanent housing. Um, I mentioned the Utility Bill Payment Assistance Program. So, we help low-income households keep up on their utilities. So, when folks are, um, at risk of a, a utility shut-off, we can really help prevent that by, um, supporting the household with, uh, utility payments. So, we will pay utilities on behalf of the household. Um, I mentioned, we are, we do energy assistance, um, you know, Pacific Power assistance. Uh, we work with Wasco PUD, um, Natural Gas Assistance, Garbage and Recycling, Water. And we also, I mentioned the Firewood Program that we do every winter time in partnership with Wasco County. So, we, we literally co-staff, uh, the Firewood Program. We, um, support that over at the, um, the public, um, access site. And we actually have folks drive through and we give them firewood and load it onto their trucks. Our home weatherization program will, really works in alignment with, uh, the Energy Assistance Program, the Utility Bill Payment Assistance Program. So, when we see households that have high utility bills on a regular basis, we want to train it, uh, from the core. So, we'll get into the home and we will do energy efficiency upgrades on the home. We'll replace windows, we'll replace doors, we'll aeroscale the home, we'll install new efficient, energy-efficient heating systems and cooling systems, um, new energy-efficient appliances. Uh, so we'll do all that work so we can reduce the overall household, uh, monthly energy burn and, and energy costs. And that way households, um, basically they're achieving housing stability by doing that, by going through the weatherization program. And they can divert their resources to pay for other things like healthcare, food or housing. And as you can see here, um, you know, we've served, uh, sixteen Wasco households in twenty-twenty-one. Um, the number of households that you see in the list is from our twenty-twenty numbers. But, uh, this program has, um, increased in demand significantly. Out of the, you know, we've served sixteen Wasco County households, we've served a total of twenty-one. So, as I mentioned, Wasco County households have received a lion's share of the resources. Um, we also have a waitlist for this program that is over sixty, um, households looking for weatherization services. So, we have a number of community partners that we are working with, uh, across the region. I mentioned the Housing Authority and here you have the list of the many others, and I'll talk a little bit more about that right here. So, some of the recent successes I wanted to highlight is, right after I started in November, um, we pulled together a collaborative of seven agencies across the region. And we applied, um, with Mid-Columbia Community Action as the lead. We applied for, um, resources through the Emergency Solutions Grant Program to fund homeless services in the region between basically, um, March of this year and, um, September of twenty-twenty-two. Uh, we, we applied for one point eight million dollars. And, um, we were very surprised when the state called us and said, you are the number one scoring application in the state and we wanna know how much money you want, uh, which is, those of you who write grants, that is not something you get when, uh, the folks respond to you. Usually they say, how much are you willing to take, um, below what you asked for? So, um, and we ended up, so we applied for one point eight, we ended up getting over three point one million dollars for the region. So, phenomenal resource that resulted in us being able to run the Dow's, uh, shelter site year-round. It's also funding Hood River Shelter Services to run their shelter, um, throughout this entire winter. It's funding another, a number of other organizations to do some homeless prevention and rental assistance programs, such as the Mid-Columbia Housing Authority, um, Oregon Human Development Corporation, which focuses on serving, um, agricultural workers and the Latinx population, also the Nexador, um, Niche Wana Housing and Bridges to Health have all been funded, um, to do homeless services work in the region. Uh, I mentioned, you know, we've, we've paid about two point five million dollars in rental assistance on behalf of tenants to local area landlords through our partnership with the Housing Authority. And then most recently, we put out a press release on this last week, but we received about, we received one point five million dollars from the Oregon Legislature's Budget Reconciliation Bill to build a navigation center in the Dow. Build or acquire, um, or both. And a navigation center is really the combination of shelter and social services that are brought onto one site. So, we're really looking for a site where we would bring our current shelter that is off of, uh, Barge Way and Terminal. And, um, we would bring that basically and our office together, as well as the co-location of a number of other agencies, including Center for Living, who will have some staff, um, who will work out of the navigation center to support our shelter guests, um, and a few other agencies as well. Another project that we're working on is the redevelopment of the Hamilton Apartments that we, we currently own in the Dow. It is on Second Street, um, for those of you who are familiar with it, next to the Peterson Cat, um, shop there on Second Street. Currently, there's ten units there that provide housing for formerly homeless veterans. And we are looking to redevelop that site. It's a large site in and of itself. It's about one point three acres. And we are looking to put approximately sixty new, uh, permanent supportive housing units on that site that will have a focus, um, of serving formerly homeless veterans. So, we'll probably prioritize about half the units for formerly homeless veterans. We also are partnering with, uh, the Mid-Columbia Housing Authority. They have, um, awarded us with project-based rental assistance for this project. And we're also, um, gonna be working with the Mid-Columbia Center for Living and One Community Health to support the residents who will reside in this site. So, permanent supportive housing is defined as below. This is something I very much focused on at the state level, but it brings, uh, long-term lease-based housing together with supportive services that help folks be successful in their housing. So, it's really a great, uh, long-term housing resource for folks who are coming out of homelessness. It'll be a great transition for folks who are going from our shelter and into permanent housing. This could become the housing that they, um, will then live in. So, I mentioned the Navigation Center already. You were super excited for this opportunity to, um, build a Navigation Center in the region. Um, it, it'll be great to have multiple agencies under one roof and, um, have sort of a one-stop shop. Um, we're currently searching for a site. Um, we have one point five million. It is very likely that we will need additional resources to complete the project. Um, we've also been closely working with Sheriff McGill and the Crisis Resolution Center team to see if there is a synergy that can be created between these two projects. We will be moving, as I mentioned, the Mid-Columbia Community Action offices to this Navigation Center site. We've, we've quickly outgrown our site, um, on Fourth Street, which is where our current offices are. As we've gone in November, we went from nine staff to where we have about twenty-five staff today. So, um, some up and coming things, I mentioned our strategic plan, um, it has been released today. We sort of have a number of things that have been released today. We have a new strategic plan, um, a new logo, which you kind of have gotten some glimpses of that already in this presentation. We have a new website that has launched, is launching today. Um, so three great things that are happening. I'm also excited to announce that, um, we purchased, um, a shower restroom trailer for Wasco County, um, uh, earlier this year. It was just completed a few weeks back. Um, and I was surprised to show up at my office yesterday and it was sitting in the front. So, we now have a shower restroom trailer. Um, it is being located at our shelter site in the Dow. The city of the Dow did put in, uh, sewer and water, so we could station that shower trailer there for the time being, which will allow our shelter guests a place to, um, take a shower. Um, they have restrooms in them. So, they're, our shelter guests are currently just using porta-potties and there hasn't been any running water. So, this provides a much-needed resource for, uh, folks who are looking to, you know, obtain long-term employment, which, as you all can imagine, it is very difficult to obtain employment when you don't have a place to shower on a regular basis. So, this is a great resource. Um, and then we also talked about permanent supportive housing. So, lots of great stuff that is happening at the agency. Um, so, here is our contact information. Um, my contact information was included as well at the beginning of the slideshow. So, feel free to reach out to me if you have questions, comments, or would like to get involved with Community Action in any way. Our Facebook page, pretty active, um, at this point in time. Um, but there you have our contact information and I'm happy to answer any easy question.
Well, I, 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 I think I'll ask the question that I'm sure everybody's wondering about. What are you doing with all your free time? Cause it doesn't seem like you've been doing much. That was a joke.
Well, Scott, you know I'm rafting.
I know. He, Kenny guided us down to the shoots a couple of weeks ago with the city of Moplin. But, wow, that was incredible. Uh, there were some comments in the chat, but man, oh man, you guys are doing a lot of stuff. That's awesome. Commissioners, do you have any, Kathy, you probably don't have any questions, but you might have some comments. But, uh, any, any questions for Kenny?
I'm just, uh, I just wanna say how great it is to, um, you know, see this Community Action Program truly in action in our community. So, um, it's, it's great. And I was wondering, Kenny, could you address, um, you know, often get the question, um, two things. One is, um, the houseless committee that the city with, uh, Mayor Mays and how you're connected with that as, and I'm on that as well. And also, um, you know, people often ask, you know, how many people do we have in our community that is, that are truly houseless? And, um, how do we know that? And how, how, how is that process work? So, if you could address those two things, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Uh, thanks, thanks Kathy. Um, so, yes, the, the mayor and I actually worked, um, earlier, actually right after I started, we, we began working on developing a local task force in the city, um, to deal with houselessness. So, we have a, a small committee, um, but, but strong. Um, as Kathy mentioned, she is on it, um, as well as a few other folks. There's about nine members, I believe. Um, we are really focused right now on this Navigation Center, uh, site location. So, we're looking for this permanent location. One of the goals of the committee was to identify a permanent shelter location in the community. So, um, that is one of the focus areas. There's a few other focus areas, including sanitation. We also are going to be working to put, put together a regional effort around, um, houselessness. So, there's been a lot of localized efforts that have occurred and many agencies serve, you know, the, the three-county area of Sherman, Wasco and Hood River. Uh, we also have a Community Action Agency on the other side of the river in Washington. And our clients really, um, they move between our communities. And so, we really feel, feel like it's appropriate to have a regional approach to how we're serving folks. So, we're gonna be doing some work to regionalize efforts. As far as homeless population numbers goes, um, so the last point-in-time count, for those of you not familiar with the point-in-time count, but it, it's, um, it's a count that occurs every January. Typically, there is a full count done every other year. And there is a, um, uh, just a count of folks who are living in shelters, um, on the other years. This last year, there was no count because we just did a shelter count. It was supposed to be a full count. We did not do a full count because of, um, COVID-nineteen and the complications that that posed for volunteers to get out into the community and, um, and identify folks. But the count occurs in January, which, um, in and of itself is an issue because of weather-related concerns, especially in the gorge where you have, uh, you can have extremely bad weather, which can impact where you, um, are able to locate folks. The last point-in-time count had about ninety folks in Wasco County that were identified. I, from what I know, um, the region has not done a super great job of a point-in-time count. I think Community Action and a few other agencies were involved. But there needs to be a much more broader scale effort that is taken on. And we will be, um, leading that this next January. Um, I actually led the point-in-time count in Central Oregon and we had a great volunteer base, um, and great collaboration among the entire community to get that done. Um, and, you know, significant, very significant numbers. I, you know, I know that the ninety number is wrong because I've got a hundred people on my shelter waitlist right now and I've got thirty people living there. So, we have more than ninety people right there, um, already. And, um, we know that there's other folks that are missed as well. So, um, we're gonna be doing a better count this next year. So, I'm happy to come back and talk about that count once it's completed. And then also another thing that we are doing is Community Action is taking lead on what is called the Homeless Management Information System and Coordinated Entry. Um, so we're working with about twelve different organizations in the region to support them from a technology standpoint, so that they have the resources they need to put folks into a system where we all can share client information. We can all see, um, if, if Joe has served, um, you know, at Saint Vincent de Paul, I can look and see what services Joe received at Saint Vincent de Paul, um, and know that he's accessed services there. And that is shared across agencies. Currently, clients have to go into each individual social service agency, fill out applications at each agency. And we're moving now to this coordinated entry system, which is better from a data collection standpoint. It's also better from a service standpoint to clients, because we're not sending them all over the place, not knowing what's going on with them. Um, duplicating services, we're not doing that anymore. So, um, lots of exciting stuff. I, I am happy to say that our data expert, who has risen as a statewide expert, um, is actually somebody who came from our shelter, um, who was a shelter guest. And he has risen, um, as a statewide expert in data. So, we are also employing some folks, um, that we serve.
Awesome. All right, Commissioner Kramer, did you have any, any questions, comments?
No, I just, uh, comment, um, it, uh, look forward to meeting with you, uh, Mr. LaPointe in person, uh, to talk about this further. I had a good chat with, um, Mayor Mays and, and retired Chief Ashmore about this program. And, and, uh, I'm all in favor of it. I'm loving the transitional piece that, that you're putting together. And it sounds like that our society has finally gotten our, you know what, together, that, uh, we can start, uh, making some strides in the mental and the behavioral health side of this. So, very excited in, um, about, uh, what, uh, our, um, partnership is with, um, the Resolution Center and, uh, moving forward for this community to, uh, to get folks back in homes. So, uh, thank you for all your efforts.
Thanks.
All right. Um, I, I, I'll tell you that Commissioner Schwartz can barely contain herself when she starts talking about you and how excited she is that you're here and all the great stuff you're doing. And, uh, I have to agree. I, you know, I just met you a couple of weeks ago, but man, oh man, this is some, this is some awesome work you're doing. And I think we are lucky as a county and as a community to have you here and all your skills and experience and connections. So, thank you so much. Uh, and, uh, we appreciate the work that you do and look forward to hearing great success in the future.
Thank you Chair Haggy, and I, I look forward to coming back and reporting back to you in a year. Um, you know, all the successes we've had on all the initiatives that I've mentioned already. So, I'm excited to do that and, um, feel free to reach out to me at any point in time if I can help in any way.
Sounds great. And I did get your message and I'm working on something Kenny, so I will hopefully be back to you soon. All right. Thank you very much. Um, we are a little bit running behind, but we're gonna go ahead and move on to our next one. And, uh, Commissioner Kramer, you probably don't know this, but I'm gonna turn this over to you. Kind of been, uh, leading, uh, person on the commission here in this item. So, I'll kind of turn it over to you for introductions and take it away. If that's all right.
Well, yeah, thank you. Um, um, I have not had the opportunity to meet, uh, Mr. Coyle or, or Mr. Mitchell yet. But, um, thank you gentlemen for being here today. Yes, um, the, um, we have, um, we have an issue in Wasco County, um, per se. The Wasco County landfill. The Wasco County landfill, who is, excuse me there, who is owned by Waste Connections, is a private company. And, and then we have some adjoining property owners. Mr. Wade has an orchard next door, and there's been some issues. And, and so I think that the parties are all working together. From my last report from Mr. Greg Sutherland from the DEQ, that all parties are having conversations and they're working through the issues. And with that, I believe that the last conversation that we had, we would like to get an update from, from our partners, from AFIS, and to tell us where we are, what we can do, and maybe what the next steps are. So with that, Mr. Coyle, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. Can you hear me all right? Great. So for the record, my name is Shane Coyle. I'm the district supervisor for Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service, which the acronym is AFIS, for a program called Wildlife Services. Also on here have my coworker Jared Mitchell, who has been assisting me with this project. We were contacted in early April asking for help with the abundant bird populations around the landfill and the impacts it was having on the landfill and the neighboring orchards. So in May, we did a site visit and noted that there was a lot of ravens and gulls in the area. And then from there, we started meeting with affected parties to come up with a path forward. To kind of introduce some of the people that are on here, and I'm sure they'll want to chime in and, and say a few words as well. But some of the people we've been meeting with in our group is Brian Ebola, who is the district manager for Waste Connections, orchardist and landowners, Gary Wade, Brenda Thomas, Bill Anderson and his son, and Doug Weimer. And then kind of who started communicating all this was the Department of Environmental Quality. And so Todd Hesse and Brian Sieblund, I think, is on here and has been instrumental in kind of organizing some of this. We've also met and talked with Jeremy Thompson, who is the district biologist for ODFW in the Mid Columbia area. So in our meetings in the last few months, we've talked about the solution and a path forward, and have come up what we feel like is a, a pretty good coordinated, integrated management plan. And so I'll tell you more about what that coordinated, integrated management plan is. But first off, let me tell you about our agency, because a lot of people may ask, you know, why, why is the federal government involved on, on this issue? So our agency is charged with animal damage control under the Animal Damage Control Act of 1931. And this is our area specialty. We help with wildlife issues all over the nation and all types of agricultural and industrial areas. We have a well-known research branch that is devoted to evaluating methods of effectiveness while still maintaining the quality of the environment. We've been, also, we've been helping Wasco County with other wildlife management issues for several years now. With, by us leading this coordinated, integrated management plan is beneficial as we're kind of a third party in this. We don't necessarily have skin, skin in the game. We're here to try to bring all the affected parties together and try to come up with a, a path forward. Our job is very narrow, and we try to reduce the conflict while looking out for the public's wildlife. We have, you know, the experience. We also got the time that we can set aside to this. If you're an orchardist, the ravens are affecting your, your cherries, you know, when they're getting ready to be harvested, and that's your busiest time. And so it's hard, hard, difficult for them to dedicate the sufficient amount of time during then. So it's coordinated, this is a coordinated plan in that, you know, we've got the, the affected individuals, the landfill, the orchardists, the nearby landowners involved to hear their say and to see what, what ideas they have to move forward. And at certain times, the plan would shift to, you know, focusing on different properties and where we can assist, you know, throughout the area. It's an integrated plan, meaning that it, it's multiple approaches. There's no one cure-all usually when you're dealing with wildlife. So one of the first things when we're managing wildlife, we like to look at habitat. And if there's something we can modify or alter in the habitat, because that will give us the most long-term solutions. Some of this habitat is pretty ingrained there, but there may be some things we can do to, to modify it, reduce bird attractants, alter human practices that, that could help. After habitat has been exhausted and you feel that there's no more that can be done, not that you can't continue to circle back and see if there's others, we move on to the next integrated approach, which would be harassment. And this is the process of making birds feel unwelcome, that they're not wanted there. So pyrotechnics, propane cannons, distress calls, scarecrows, falcons, drones. There's a long list of tools and things that have been invented or being sold to aid in harassing wildlife. We, we try to use as many of these as we can. We start with the most effective ones based on science and experience, and then move down the list. Some of these tools for harassment, we would have to reach out to other parties. Example, that would be falcon use. There are a lot of upkeep, and so we've, we've talked, or the, we, we were given a list of some local falconers that may be willing to assist us. So we'll reach out to them and, and see what help they can provide. If habitat harassment doesn't have the, the effect that you would like, we may be resorting to lethal control. Lethal control would be needed mostly to reinforce the harassment, to remind the birds that, you know, loud noises are, are bad, or if some of these other options were ineffective. To lethally remove most of the species we're talking about here, ravens or gulls, that would require a U.S. Fish and Wildlife permit. They're the ones that oversee that. And along with that permit comes special conditions that you have to follow. The tools that we've, we've talked about using for lethal control, if it got to that, would be firearms, traps, and possibly toxicants, or also known as pesticides. We'll talk more about that because I know that's where a lot of the interest is, has stemmed in the community there, which is good. I'm glad, glad that people are interested in what pesticides are out there. Because pesticides, they can have a negative effect on the environment, which includes other wildlife. We would resort to pesticide or an Abysside as a last resort here and after careful consideration. The Abysside that we have used in other places effectively and safely is a product called DRC 1339. This product's been around for a long time. They've been studying it and using it for 30 to 40 years. It's, it's very lethal to a handful of birds that it targets and not as lethal to other birds or mammals. There, there's a lot of scientific data around these numbers in the LD50s. You know, what, what's lethal to a raven versus a fox or a coyote or a red-tailed hawk? So that stuff can be searched out, or I can provide it to anybody that may want to see that. This, this Abysside, DRC 1339, also has minimal risk of secondary poisoning as when the ravens consume the Abysside, they will digest it out as non-toxic metabolites before they succumb to the effects. So there's been a lot of extensive studies on the secondary effects of this poison. In fact, they, they fed some raptors and scavenging mammals, some, some carcasses of birds that were poisoned with this Abysside, and no symptoms of secondary effects were, were ever noted. With this, even, it's just a safe pesticide, and that's why we, we use this one. But also with it, how we use it also makes it safe. When using this pesticide, if we were to use it before, we would, we would monitor the area for non-targets, you know, other birds, other wildlife that may be in the area. And we wouldn't apply the pesticide if, if they were documented. Next, would select a bait that is desirable to the target species, such as eggs. If you're going after ravens, they prey on eggs. And so that, that would select for them and, and reduce the likelihood of other birds would be interested in it. And so also, also whether the bait is out, we, we monitor it to make sure everything's going well, and then we clean up any unconsumed bait. It's a very user-friendly pesticide where it's easy to clean up. The, in talking with the orchardists there, they need to communicate with, with their higher-ups and their buyers and the Food and Drug Administration to make sure that this pesticide isn't going to adversely affect them. So for now, we've kind of just said we're, we're going to avoid trying to put any Abyssides on these orchards for this first year and, and see how things go. A couple of other things to note. Ravens and, and gull populations are, are increasing nationally and in Oregon. Ravens are up 2% in Oregon and 3.5% nationally. I, you know, a question may come, why? You know, I don't know. I didn't look into why raven numbers are increasing. So with this integrated approach that we're coordinating with everybody, it's not just a cure-all, and we just do it. You, you always got to continually monitor what's going on, how things are, are working, and adjust and, and, and reevaluate. So it's a continual process. So I think that's kind of introduces what's going on and kind of what our plan forward would be. I guess on the financial side of it, we, we would ask for money from the landfill to help pay for some of this. And then for the, the orchardists around the area, we would like to use the current contract that we have set up through the county to pay for that work that we do on their property. So is there anything you think I left out, Commissioner Kramer?
No, thank you, Ms. Coyle. I think that was a really good overview of, of all that's entailed. It, it, it's complex, and I'm really pleased to hear that the parties are, are all working together to, to make this somewhat of a reasonable outcome here. Very pleased to hear that the pesticides will be potentially the last resort. And so with that, I'll offer to my colleagues any questions that either of you may have. And then I'll open up the public for a few minutes and try to keep us on time today. Thank you.
I'm good, Steve.
Well, I do have a couple of questions. Thank you, Shane, for that overview. I really appreciate it. So, you know, one thing that I heard you say, but we didn't spend a lot of time on, and, and the reason why is this altering of human practices. You know, because in my limited knowledge base around all of this, it seems like when you talk about the lethal control, whether it's firearms, traps, pesticides, you know, that, that seems like that could be a short-term solution. But since there's so many birds, they're just, if the human attraction, what we're doing as humans continues, the birds will continue to come. And so could you talk a little bit about the altering of the human practices that you mentioned briefly?
Yeah. And I'm not in authority and don't want to say that we need to get rid of the landfill or the cherries. You know, I know that's a, a needed thing there. Is there little things that those individuals can do? You know, and visiting the landfill, I thought they were keeping a very fast or very small face and, and closing it quickly. And so I think they're doing a good job there. More time on the ground, we can look for other things that, that they might be able to alter there. You know, if there's spills, or if there's something that they're overlooking that we can suggest. For the cherries, you know, I don't know. I mean, we want to grow cherries there, you know? Everybody likes, likes the cherries. And having them alter growing cherries, I don't know if that's the solution either. But, but maybe there's little things that they can do within their practices that could, you know, change, change the long-term behavior. Some other things, maybe some of this off-site stuff. You know, may, maybe the residents in the area are leaving their garbage cans uncovered, and that's attracting ravens. Maybe, maybe there's some people in the area that are purposely feeding ravens. You know, we've seen that. You know, people have complained about issues, and we find a few doors down, you've got somebody that's, you know, causing an attractant or what have you. So human behavior, it, without being on the ground too, too much, it's hard to say what that might be. But seeing if there's other practices in, in the community that can be altered, they're attracting them there.
Thank you. And I just, Greg from DEQ, I see that you are on the line. And so, hi, hi, Greg. So it is your job to monitor the landfill, is that right? That they are doing what they're supposed to be doing and the way they're supposed to be doing it, correct?
It's DEQ's, and actually Todd Hess is the permit rider for this solid waste facility. He's on the line. I've been more on getting people together and coordinating with landowners and, and the stakeholders. But I'll, I'll let Todd ask, answer the permitting questions, but yes, you're correct.
Okay, thank you. I don't really have, I don't really have a question for Todd, except just to confirm that it is DEQ's responsibility to make sure that everything is being done correctly at the landfill.
Yeah, and, and I can speak for Todd, I think, on this. The, the requirement, though, ends at the landfill. Pardon me. The, the, the requirement for bird control is on the landfill and not necessarily to the adjacent properties. And that's been, that's been difficult for us to resolve in a sense, because I understand that, you know, landowners are thinking, yes, they're coming here primarily because of the landfill, which is probably true. State rule and the way that the permit's written is for bird control on the footprint of the landfill. And so that's part of what this group has been trying to accomplish is, let's extend that, and let's bring other people in because we know this is, this is not confined to the landfill, even though the specific regulations may be.
Oh, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I'll, I guess, Gary, it looked like you had a few comments. You have anything that you'd like to say, Mr. Wade? You're muted. You're on mute. You need to click your button. There you go.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I really appreciate that AFIS is getting involved with the whole process, that there's some movement ahead. We've been experiencing these problems for a few years, and it just seems to be getting worse. And, you know, we, we all talked about, let's do all the methods we can possibly do to minimize these bird populations and impacts. And we're all for that. You know, we're, we're not agreeing to the poison, poison or pesticides, whatever, on our properties at this point, as far as I'm, certainly not on ours. But we need to keep, keep moving ahead, looking for as many alternatives as, as we can to minimize these bird populations. Because we don't have control over the birds that are attracted to the landfill, and they end up on our property, and they cause extensive damage and potentially health impacts that I think are, are just detrimental to the community.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wade. You know, it appears that we have all the subject matter experts at the table. It appears that there's a good group that that's communicating well. And I think that we just have to keep moving forward and doing the best we can with all of this. I know that I know that the folks at the Wasco County Landfill and and Waste Connections are doing all they can as well to help mitigate this. And I'm just pleased that everybody has come to the table. It has taken a little bit of time, but I'm pleased that we're all there. So with that, Chair Higgy, I think this conversation is concluded and we'll
Actually, I actually have something to say before we move on. If if that's okay, I'll keep it short. I just have two questions for Mr. Coyle. Is that, is that okay? Okay, just a reminder, I'm Ash Harris. I'm a wildlife rehabilitator at the Robina Wildlife Clinic. We are located in Wasco County. We've been there since 2000. Dr. Cypher founded the clinic and we care for all of the native orphaned and injured animals in the Columbia River Gorge. And I have a question for Mr. Coyle. I did speak with him about a week ago. I'm I'm very thankful that he's open to talking to everyone involved in the conversation. My question is that studies have, like, peer researched, peer-reviewed and research studies have shown that using poison for on birds as pest control is a short-term solution and that the birds return within a year. And so my question is, why is the Aviside in the conversation if we just know that the birds will likely return within a year? Is it something that we're going to continue to poison the birds year after year? But I'm, I just would like to hear a little discussion about that.
Okay, yeah. Why Aviside is on the table is because we like to show up at a a job site with with multiple tools. You know, we don't want to just come with a hammer or a screwdriver or whatever. And so that's why we're talking about it. It is a tool that we've used on similar projects to this. As in birds returning, yeah, you know, if birds were poisoned, you know, those ones would be lethally removed and they would return. But if if there is an abundant bird population in the area, that could open it up for others. But that's the integrated approach is we got to continue with all of of the tools and techniques. So if there are some birds that are habituated there that are not responding to the harassment or the falcons, if those ones can be removed, maybe the new ones that were to move in would be more susceptible to those harassment methods.
Okay, thank you. My second question was, there are communities who are similar to the DOWs who have effectively used raptors, like Peregrine Falcons, including Goldendale, the Waste Management Service in Goldendale, have used a master falconer since the year 2000. And they they have a problem with their seagulls there. And so I just wanted to really go on record and just say that we encourage at the Robina Wildlife Clinic, we would really encourage investigation into these non-lethal techniques that have proven to be effective in communities very similar to the DOWs. And and we just really hope that the timeline also remains transparent, that that you are open to telling the community what sort of techniques you're using and and for how long you'll use them so that the community can be involved in this issue as well.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, we we really would like to to use falconry. And and if that fixes it, you know, if that one tool is a fix-all, that's great, you know. But just want to want to bring all tools to the table.
Sure. Will there be, will you be discussing the timeline with the community? For example, like, we are going to try falconers, then if that doesn't work within five weeks, we're moving on to, you know, it, will there be transparency in in the process?
Um, I think there's transparency and we're willing to answer questions that the public asks us. But publicizing what we're doing day to day, I don't think would be in our plan.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the time, commissioners.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Evans. Sounds like you've already been in touch with Mr. Coyle and and I think that the line of communication is there. So I think that the transparency piece is going to be covered in. I don't think that there's anything that that we're going to hide out on. It's going to be above board and we're going to make sure that everything's taken care of. So with that, is there anybody else that wants to say anything on this topic?
Yes. Yeah, I'm Marlis Ruffner, the owner of the property adjacent to the the landfill. And we are Wayne Ruffner. We operate the the cherry orchard there. I'm wondering if anybody from the landfill is represented here today? And if they are what they are doing, just what they are doing to mitigate for the the birds and this problem?
It's Brian Evola on the call today. At this point, we haven't started anything. And the reason being is it has been our operating plan, for those of you that that may not know on the call, that there was an agreement with all these, with all the surrounding orchards to not harass the birds during growing seasons, tree plantings, and a bunch of other stuff. So that limited us to maybe a month or two in the winter time. So those couple months didn't have much effect on the birds. So we have now with this call and we have Shane and his team on on board helping us and Todd. We're going to write into DEQ to get that removed from our operating plan so that we can start managing the birds with the tools that we've had and the tools that we have kept permits to do so, which is pyrotechnics and some other things. We have those tools onsite. They've been there for years. We just haven't utilized them because of those agreements. And our operating plan said that we will not do our typical harassment of the birds.
So what it Can you hear me now? Okay. And what are you doing to minimize the populations through covering the landfill? Or what other measures are you taking other than harassment?
That's, that is what we have to us, which is keeping our working face small. Minimum minimizing some of the waste that might be attracted and how we handle them. We handle special loads in order to minimize them wanting to congregate. And then we make sure we cover throughout the day as we go to keep that working face as small as possible.
What are the spaces left open?
No, it's covered with dirt. That's the requirement.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'm going to, this, this sounds like we're going to get into a little bit of a debate here. And we don't need to do that here during this meeting. That'll be for the group to get together and and someone. Maybe Mr. Sutherland and I need to talk about facilitation or mediation, but 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 I think we need to move past this right now. And and Mr. Coyle, I appreciate you and your team. Mr. Sutherland, you and your team, all the other players that are involved with this. We can find a solution. We will find a solution. And but it's, it's going to take a whole lot longer than than the time we have allotted for this morning. So looking forward to visiting with all of you on all aspects. And my phone number I will put in the chat as soon as I get done talking. And we'll, we'll move forward with this. And thank you all for your participation today. Chair Higgy?
All right, thanks, Steve. Appreciate you kind of heading that up. And appreciate everyone being here for that conversation. This this won't go away. This don't necessarily be the last time we talk about it. But as Steve said, we really appreciate, you know, Shane, Jared and the folks from DEQ here. And I think that's, you know, really the way to approach this, is try to work together on a solution that works for everyone. So that's, I think, what your commissioners are committed to try to do. And, you know, we're not going to be hiding this. We'll, you know, we're ready to take it on and encourage folks to work on it for a collaborative solution. So again, thanks, everyone, for being here and we will see you all later. You can stay and we can hear about our UPR settlement, which we're going to go to next. Kristen, you're up.
Hi, good morning. So this, the document before you, the settlement and release agreement concludes a years-long litigation originating from the 2014 land use application filed by Union Pacific Railroad for the track expansion, double track in the city of Mosher. As you recall, Wasco County wound up denying that application based on the the failure for of Union Pacific to comply with the treaty rights provisions in our ordinance, which was a requirement imposed by the National Scenic Area Act. That then commenced a lawsuit by Union Pacific Railroad in multiple venues. After a decision by the United States Federal District Court on a collary that was opposed to Union Pacific, Union Pacific then agreed, then invited the parties to participate in a mediation. That mediation was primarily between Union Pacific Railroad and the impacted treaty tribes. Through through years of of effort, what you see before you is the conclusion of that. It is a settlement and release that have has been agreed to and signed by all all parties involved. Wasco County is the last party that this is before at this time. Basically, what this settlement, what this settlement does is it requires Union Pacific to withdraw the application. It also results in a moratorium where Union Pacific is agreeing that they will not they will not submit another application or endeavor to expand their operations in that Mosher footprint. It also requires the railroad and the tribes to enter into a memorandum memorandum of understanding, which would effectively prevent prevent a situation like this in the future. It requires the railroad to work in collaboration with with the tribes. And finally, it would dismiss all of the pending lawsuits. And that's that's where we're at at this time.
Thanks, Kristen. Have a long time coming.
Yeah.
And it, questions for Kristen on this?
I don't have any questions. I mean, Kristen's kept us well informed along the way, for sure.
I had, go ahead, Steve.
I'm just glad that it's finally over. Thank you.
I had a quick question. You made a comment, Kristen, that UPR would not, I don't remember exactly, but they wouldn't be pursuing this track expansion. Was that a timeframe, like, they wouldn't be pursuing it for a while? Or they will never in for the rest of human existence pursue a track expansion?
That's a good, that's a good point of clarification. They have agreed to five years.
Okay, so basically for five years, this thing is put on ice and then potentially it could come back in five years from now. But, you know, that's kind of not in, that's not going to be covered by this agreement.
That's right.
Okay, all right, perfect. All right. So and you're looking for us to basically consider and consider approving this, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so commissioners, other questions or do you have a motion to proceed with this?
Chair Higgy, we did get a question in the comment box of Mr. Nichols.
Oh, there you go. So Roger was wanting to know if the settlement agreement has anything to do with paying the county's legal expenses?
Um, it it does not.
Yeah, and I I can tell you that it wasn't because we didn't ask that and other things. I think the challenge for this entire situation is, you know, when when Union Pacific came to the county and, you know, it seemed like a barely innocuous, you know, kind of situation at the time, our planning folks, you know, charged them a pretty substantial fee at the time for this work. But what we found as time went on is that we have expended a great deal more money for our planning department and through efforts and legal expenses than we've ever been able to recover. So it's been a learning experience for us, fortunately and unfortunately. But I think going forward, we're going to be very cautious when these kind of projects come to us, that the agreements we have in place are going to make sure that this doesn't happen to us again because we've expended a lot more money than we've ever gotten out of this project. So lesson learned. All right. Commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and move to approve the settlement and release agreement between and among Union Pacific Railroad, Wasco County, and other represented parties stated.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and second. Any questions? I have a quick one. So Kristen, you had commented that we were the last entity in this agreement to consider this. Has everybody else approved it at this point?
Yes.
Okay, so we're the last party. All right, any other comments, questions, discussion? If not, I'll call for the questions. Always in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, Chair votes, yes. All right. Thank you very much, Kristen. We, as always, appreciate that. Tyler, we are just six minutes behind now. Building Code Services Agreement. What do you got for us?
Yeah, good morning. So in front of you, you have the Building Codes Services Agreement between us and Hood River County. And if you remember, when we were going back a year or so now, when we originally agreed to take over building codes from the state, obviously, we didn't have staff hired and a number of other challenges in spinning up a building program. And at that time, we initiated some agreements with our neighboring counties, Hood River County, Jefferson County, to basically fill in when we needed help. And we've done that and been doing that reciprocally between Jefferson County and Hoover River County and Wasco County for that entire time. And that has actually been working fairly well. And so that was never intended to be a long-term service agreement. And in talking with Hood River County, we're still currently sharing services between the two counties with, we've got inspectors that they need. They've got inspectors and a building official that we need. And this agreement really outlines an agreement that we will share services between the two counties in a much more open way. So it's not, wouldn't be just a one-off. The Building Department of Hood River County and the Building Department of Wasco County would essentially be acting as a single building department for the two counties. And that gives us some synergy and also gives us, you know, things like vacation backup. And that gives us some synergy and also gives us, you know, things like vacation backup. Experience where we've got experiences Hood River doesn't have and where Hood River has experience that we don't have. We can just basically pull an inspector from Hood River County to do work in Wasco County. Or likewise from Wasco to Hood River County. And so we've been working on this for quite a while now. And we've come to this agreement. And we're going to try it out for. And see how those, how things go. We're not going to try to bill each other for costs, which is a unique provision. You know, wherever the permit fees land is where they end up staying, regardless of who does the inspection or the plan review. Or, or those types of scenarios. And, you know, we think our volumes are pretty similar where. That's not going to be an issue, but you know, over the course of the next year, we're going to monitor that and really. Kind of take a look at it. And if there's any scenarios that are way, way out of line there, then we're going to pick that back up and take another look at it. So. That's the gist of the agreement that you have in front of you. And I would recommend us moving forward. As you know, we don't currently have a building official hired. Hood River does. And so we've been, we've been utilizing Mark over in Hood River County to, to help us on the building official sides. And Hood River County has been using our electrical inspector because he's got advanced certification. And so we want to continue that relationship, see how that goes for you. So. Any questions for me?
All right. Thanks, Tyler. That's, I mean, that's awesome. I mean, it's great that we're collaborating and cooperating with our neighboring county. I've talked to some of the contractors out there and generally speaking, all of them feel like it's going well. They didn't even actually know that we were kind of informally doing this kind of cooperative thing with them. But I asked them if, what they felt like in terms of going forward with the same kind of approach. And at least the ones I talked to thought excellent idea. So I, I think it's great. And if you have some kind of points in there that we can kind of stop and check and see how things are going and make sure that we true everything up. So it makes sense to me. I don't have any questions other than that. Commissioners. Oh, go ahead, Steve.
No, I'm, I think this is a great move and. Like we're going to try it for a year. I think it's great. So Commissioner Schwartz doesn't have any questions. I will go ahead and move to approve the IGA between Wasco County and Hood River County for reciprocal building department services.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion of second to do more collaboration and cooperation. All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes, yes. All right. You got yourself an agreement, Tyler. Thanks for your work on that. Appreciate that. I think this is a good way to move forward. I think generally speaking, building codes has been going pretty well for us and I'm happy with that. So. Very good. All right. With that, we will jump back up to the discussion list, which we did not finish. And I'm sorry, Nicole. But of course you wanted to be here anyway with this all day. We do have your item as the next one, the Juneteenth resolution. I'll hand that over to you.
Yes, I love spending my mornings with everyone in the community. Just for the record, Nicole Beekler, HR Director for Wasco County. Circling back commissioners today on the conversation we started a few months ago in regards to Juneteenth. So today before you, you have a resolution to add this as a holiday for Wasco County for the organization. So essentially, last time the question was, what is Juneteenth? So truly, it is short for June 19th, which essentially is when federal troops arrived in Galveston, Texas in 1865. Two years actually after the Emancipation Proclamation had been signed. Their arrival there signaled basically, I'm ensuring that all enslaved people be freed. And so essentially this is considered the longest-running African-American holiday. And we would like to add it to our list of approved holidays for Wasco County.
All right, very good. Thank you. Educational information for us. Appreciate it. Questions for Nicole? And if no questions, do we have a motion?
Sure. I will move to approve, in fact proudly move to approve Resolution 21-006, proclaiming June 19th as Juneteenth Day.
Thanks, Kathy.
I'll second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, yes. All right, thank you, Nicole. Appreciate that. Appreciate the work on that. We also have an EDC appointment. And I don't know, Kathy, do you have anything else for us on that? Kathy Clark?
It's, it's a fairly simple, straightforward member of the EDC who was representing the port. Mike Courtney has stepped down from that position and the port is recommending Jennifer Toki. Who is an employee at the port to, to step in and finish his term, which ends at the end of next year.
Very good. Thank you. And for those of you that may not know Jennifer, she's a wonderful person and very passionate and I think she'll do a great job. And I take a motion.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move to approve Order 21-042, appointing Jennifer Toki to Position 4 on the Economic Development Commission.
No, I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes, yes. All right. And we have a consent agenda, which has the Justice Reinvestment Act. Application and plan, many, many pages. And we have a regular session mission, regular session minutes from August 4th. So any comments, questions, changes on any of that information? And if not, I take a motion.
Move to approve consent agendas presented.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion to approve and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 And chair votes, yes. All right. So that's the, our agenda. I thought before, so we will be going into executive session and I need to find my script, but before we did that.
Commissioner?
Yes.
We are not having an executive session today. There just was no need for it. It was on there just in case and it turned out we do not need it.
Okay. Well, I won't have to find the script then. Commissioner Kramer?
Yeah, we, we got a note from Lane on potential. Funding for planning for the CGRC and. Was hoping to add it to the agenda this morning, but we didn't, we skipped that piece of it. But okay, anyway, what, what it is, is the Oregon Health Authority has released $50 million. For behavioral health and in planning grants. And we're in line to potentially get a $50,000 one. We've got a deadline of September 3rd. All of the players at our table are putting together the application. And, and what I'm asking of today is that we, we want to send a letter of interest. And we just need our consensus to send that letter of intent and, or interest. And, and then more to follow if we, if we're so lucky in receiving the grant. But it looks pretty good that we will. And, but Lane was, Lane had to leave, so he didn't, wasn't here to talk about it. But if we can have your consensus of both of you to move this forward. I can deal with that tomorrow at our meeting that we're having on the Resolution Center.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Kathy, you okay with that?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you both.
Awesome.
And then just one other thing, Chair Higgy, we, there was a tragic accident. One of our residents, David Coburn from Thai Valley was, was our fire chief down there, very active in the community. We lost him to a tragic accident hiking down in the Grand Canyons. And he will be missed and I wanted to bring that up today for everybody. So thank you, sir.
Thanks for bringing it up, Steve. That's always a tragedy. You have community leaders that now need to find someone to step into his shoes. But appreciate his service and sympathies go out to his family. All right. Before we go to commission call, just kind of open it up. We, we had a public, a public comment earlier. And I just wanted to give one final opportunity before we do commission call. Anybody out there that has something they want to bring forward to the commission, feel free to unmute yourself and we'll, Roger?
Yes, sir. Just checking my, this is a little startling and frightening, but just checking the email from the Oregon Health Authority released about 10 minutes ago. They show no ICU beds available in Region 6, which is us, which includes Hood River Memorial and MCMC. So don't, if you can possibly avoid it, don't, don't get sick or hurt yourself.
Very good point. You know, it's, if you remember back at the beginning of this, I remember when we were talking about, a lot about recreation. Where we closed the mountain wilderness and a lot of the national forests. And a lot of that was around kind of basically not wanting people to get hurt and needing rescues and or so. It's for whatever how bad it was back then, it's unfortunately worse now. So agree. Thanks for that. Thanks for highlighting that, Roger. All right. Other public comments? All right, we're going to be going, going, gone. Okay. We'll go to commissioner call, but we'll go to commissioner call. Anybody? Commissioners?
Well, you know, I'll just follow up on what Roger brought up and it's something I thought of later after Dick, Dr. McDonald left. But I do, I have heard the Oregon Health Authority really cautioning people that are unvaccinated. To really dial back their activities, stay home as much as possible. And that's certainly important. It's, it's, it's hidden right here at, at home now. So very, it's, if they can, if folks can, just stay home as much as possible. Avoid those gatherings, those weddings and all of those things that, you know, people can do. But it would be great if, if those folks would choose not to right now and really adhere to the masking and the social distancing. And all of us washing our hands way more than we ever thought necessary in the past. So. That's, that's really all I have for commission call. Thanks.
All right, Kathy. You know, it's interesting too. I was on a call. I'm getting confused with all the calls and meetings I have, but at some point in time, we had a statewide call with all the county chairs. And Region 6 was, had 0% utilization of ICU beds. And I remember at the time thinking like, wow, that's great. You know, we're, we were leading the state. But the, this, the, the reality in this region is there's not that many ICU beds. So I don't know how many they are. There's like 20 or something like that. So it doesn't take long, and Kathy, you probably know how many ICU beds there are, but it doesn't take long in a couple days to go from like 0% utilization to fully utilized.
Yeah, I think I don't have the exact number, but I think it's important. You know, both of our hospitals in the region are quite small. We don't have a lot of beds. Back in the day, we used to have a lot more beds, but since healthcare has changed so much and people are going, doing so much outpatient. And, and leaving the hospital so much sooner, those beds have really shrunk down. So we, we probably, it would be a good thing to know, but I don't think we have near 20 ICU beds in our region, probably a lot fewer than that. But of course, the problem is, is there's nowhere to transfer people either. When Bend is full and the metro area is full, as it's, it's really concerning. So be careful, everybody, please.
Yep, agree. You know, it's interesting too. I've seen this statistic. I think Oregon has the least, lowest number of total hospital beds per capita in the US. 1.6 per 100,000 or something. I don't remember. It's 1.6 per something. And we are, we are, we have the lowest number of hospital beds per capita, which, you know, isn't necessarily a bad thing. I think it kind of suggests that we're a pretty healthy population generally. And we haven't needed those beds, but the fact that we don't have very many beds now, as Roger pointed out, is particularly an ICU standpoint. And anybody that, you know, needs a bed, hopefully we can take care of them. So, all right, Steve, did you have anything?
Yeah, just to piggyback on Commissioner Schwartz's comments. If you haven't, if you haven't reconsidered the vaccine, folks, please do so. I think that it's proven, it's scientific and. Think about your neighbors, think about your friends, think about your family. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Yeah, and it doesn't necessarily mean you won't even get it. I mean, obviously there's been a lot of breakthrough in terms of people that are vaccinated, getting COVID. But I think the reality is that you may get COVID, but you're probably not going to end up in the hospital and you're probably not going to die, I mean, probability. So there's a good reason for that. All right. I, I think that's it. I, I want to say, you know, I heard, I saw a story on Facebook the other day. And it's just so heartwarming at times. I mean, there's a lot of challenging things going on, a lot of friction and people have different views. But just a silly little story, somebody at the grocery store and they let somebody who had to go in front of them, go in front of them because they were in a hurry or something. And they, and then when they got up there, this was at our Fred Meyer in, in the Dows. They had given a hundred dollar bill to the cashier to go towards the person that let them go forward. So that was kind of a heartwarming story and it's so cool when we as citizens help each other and support each other and love each other. So that's all I would leave you with today is let's do that. Let's support each other. Let's take care of each other and let's get through this. So thank you everyone for being here. We appreciate it and have a great day and take care of yourself.